This meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners will now come to order. Mr. Hoyle, you're going to deliver our invocation today and then everyone please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
In thy name, thou our heathen, our gracious heavenly Father, we ask you to look upon members of this board of commissioner with favor. Grant them wisdom and the strength to know and do thy holy will. Fill their hearts with a love of truth and righteousness so that their hearts will prosper and their endeavors will be achieved. And I hope, my Father, we seek that law and order, justice and peace prevail in all our lands and we ask this of you in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under thy command, in the best of the good and righteous of us all.
It's good to see a full house again. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have several. I apologize, but with what we've been going through with the storm, we didn't quite have everything ready and then we've had some last minute items come up. Under item B, old business, we'd like to add a budget amendment for tornado-related relief expenditures. Under new business, item A, I'd like to add a resolution requesting information from the Board of Education.
Just a second. So, under old business, do you want that as part of B action to take?
Yes, please.
Okay. Then you went to new business.
Item A, a resolution requesting information from the Board of Education.
Okay.
Then, under new business, I'd like to have a discussion of the pretrial release program and pending legislation. We have Andrew Curran to do that if we can possibly make that first under new business.
That's a new A?
A new A. A1.
Okay.
The other one, A2.
So, put the pretrial release.
That way, Andrew, it gets back where it's supposed to be doing.
Okay, pretrial release is the first item.
And then, under the consent agenda, we need to add a budget amendment for lottery funds to the Board of Education. They've made a request for lottery funds for a project, so we need to approve that for the Board of Education.
Do you get to see that?
Yes, sir, it should be in your staff.
Before we can send to it.
It's...
Is it in our items of additional?
Yes, ma'am. It's for, actually, one of the items that you and I discussed recently is the chillers there.
I know that it was sent out electronically with email, but it's in the packet.
So, it's $28,835 of lottery proceeds to go to chillers, air-cooled chillers at East and West Blueville Schools. Probably not.
Is it in our items of additional interest or?
We have an item abstracted in code.
I saw that for emergency management budget amendment. Did anybody else find it? Am I the only one missing it?
It is attached to the emergency management.
Oh, okay.
It's attached by paperclip.
It's in your additional interest items, there's a paperclip for budget amendment for emergency management and then the lottery application.
Lot of paper to that.
Madam Chair, it would seem to me that this last minute insertion should probably go under new business instead of under consent agenda so we could have at least a chance to get, you know, a two-minute discussion of what it is.
So, new business, this is, we've got A1, A2, B, C, is this D? John, do you have anything else?
I hope not.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended by the county manager.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Consent agenda, we've got one item. We don't have any items added there, do we?
No.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions on any of the items in the consent agenda? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is passed. Next on the agenda are public comments and we have two individuals. And just remind you, you have three minutes and please state your name, title if appropriate, and your address. And the first one on the list, Mr. Ed Garrison.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Ed Garrison of 2215 Lord Ashley Drive. I currently serve as Chairman of the Board of Central Carolina Community College and with me today are several trustees and I'd like to introduce them very briefly. Past Chair, Mr. Bill Wilson, and Phedeele Livnikston, and Jan Hayes, Julian Philpott, and Chess Man, and Doug Wilkinson, all from Lee County Commissioners representing here today. As Central Carolina Community College begins its celebration of our 50th anniversary, we would like to extend our appreciation to Lee County Commissioners for the support that has been, always been given to Central Carolina Community College and for the foresight in establishing this college. Without this support, CCC will not be consistently rated as one of the top community colleges in the state and in the nation. We understand that the economic recession has caused delays and a great many things that the county needs to do. It is our hope, however, that as soon as is possible, the county will put in place the financing to make the much-needed continuing education building a reality. The continuing education building is a much-needed asset for CCC for a variety of reasons. The current WB Wicker site has reached capacity to serve the medical training programs and other job-producing training programs. Because of this, the college does not have the ability to develop new medical training programs in continuing education for Lee County. Additional medical programs such as the polysonography are offered in Chatham and Harnett Counties and there's a growing need for these to be added to Lee County programs. Programs such as polysonography have close to 100 percent job placement rate upon graduation. Also, at the present time, space is not available for extensive vocational trades continuing education such as building trades. Short-term certification programs in carpentry, masonry, plumbing, and electrotrading are currently housed in makeshift locations or outer county sites. As great as the WB Wicker Center is for adult education and GED classes, the infrastructure is not in place to provide the robust technology-related training that we expect to be able to offer in the new continuing education building. Technology training programs are in high demand and also lead to immediate employment. Finally, a job-oriented career center in the new continuing education building would allow CCC to offer career and support services for students as well as the community at large. Combined with our management of the WIA programs on the Triangle South Workforce Development Board, displaced workers and others seeking employment assistance will have all of them necessary resources available to them in a single site. We, as trustees of Central Carolina Community College, are here to say thank you for your past support and to stress the importance of your continued support. Again, as time and financing allow, we hope that our new continuing education building will quickly become a reality. Thank you for all you do, CCC, and the citizens of Lee County, and we invite you to our October board meetings that we can sit down and talk about things for the future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Look forward to October.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, Charles Staley.
I'm Charles Staley. I live at 3117 Hickory Hill Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. Occupation, retired. Okay. Been looking through the budget. I've received a copy of the past budget year. The school system was budgeted $92,227, excuse me, $92,227,000. So far, they have spent $65,393,000. There's $3,800,000 out in conferences, which leaves $23,025,000 unspent as of 4/21. That breaks down to about $6.5 million a month that the school system needs. Now, when you multiply that by 12, that would come out with the school system needing $78,471,000. In short, they're getting $13,755,000 too much in budget. So, I'm just saying, how much have they asked in addition from the county this year? But looking through the budget, I found some interesting things. The first thing that surprised me was that the school system's making charter school payments. I didn't even know we had a charter school here in Lee County. I thought the last charter school that we had here in Lee County had closed down. So, where's the charter school located? They're paying for it. Where's it located? Okay. Also, on 3/29, the school system had spent $1,850,000 on laptops. And since then, between 8/29 and 4/21, they spent another $1,800,000. So far this year, they have spent $3,652,000 so far this year, and they're right on track with spending the same amount that they spent for laptops last year, which is $4,277,968. So, I'm just saying, someone needs to look through the budget before it's approved. Someone needs to sit down and say, is this necessary? I don't think the charter school, we don't have a charter school to pay, but we're paying for one, so if we're gonna pay for one, we need to have one. If we're not gonna have a charter school, we need to stop paying for it, period. But it's in the school system budget and they've spent, they have spent $11,186 for that charter school that I can't find. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staley.
Madam Chair, I can answer that question.
Okay.
The money for charter schools follows the student. So, if the student goes to, say, Moore County or Chatham Counties charter schools, they can make claim to Lee County schools for that money. So, we do have students in Lee County that go to the charter school down in Bass or the two charter schools in Chatham County. So, the money follows the student, not the school. I can't follow the laptop.
Okay. Next on the agenda, old business, first item, approval of capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2012 through 2016. Mr. Crumpton.
At our last meeting, we held the public hearing for the CIP and did not get any comments. We did just get comments from the community college on the program. I'm just there for your review and discussion. If you want to go along, you can go along.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
The CIP has presented.
I forwarded earlier today, or actually late last night, I forwarded some commentary that I had about the CIP. I'll just, and the county manager already has those comments, as do all the other commissioners or should have now. I apologize in advance for not getting that out earlier. I was just preoccupied with tornado relief and other things and did not get around a detailed review until this weekend. And while I certainly believe that there are things in the CIP we need to do, I have some concerns that there are items in the CIP that, there may be some philosophical problems with the CIP. And the chief one there is that four times in the county manager's letter to the commissioners, we talk about tax increases. And I would like to echo the sentiment from last November that I believe is still ever-present in the county, that these are not in the cards, that tax increases are not in the cards. So, if we're building a capital improvement program for the county, we should not be anticipating increased tax revenues, at least not at this juncture or until the economy turns around, that our philosophy ought to be that we live within our means and then we make assumptions that our current tax revenues are what we can support or what will be available and that we ought to do an anticipated five-year projection on revenues, you know, with a reasonable worst-case scenario so that we can then match, based on our fiscal policy that Commissioner Reeves put together back in '07, that we match then our fiscal policy of no more than 15 percent of our budget, our general fund, will go to debt service and then back our way into what we can afford to do. That's not been done from what I can tell in the CIP, and if it is, my math is wrong. But I would suggest that we go back and maybe take some more time to evaluate our revenues in light of our requested expenditures and then maybe make adjustments from there. I guess the second major point that I would have, and then I'll yield, is that we have a number of items in the CIP that have been requested and deferred out. And some of those items from the school system seem to have an associated energy efficiency accrual to the county, that if we were to do them, there's a payback, advertised payback in four years. I'd like to run that to ground. I'd like to find out, is that indeed true? Do we get a four-year payback on these HVAC upgrades? And if we do, I'd like to say, well, maybe we ought to take another hard look at that and doing it earlier rather than later. But on the other hand, if it turns out that it's not true, that there's not genuinely gonna be a four-year payback on these replacements in the electrical heat at the school for whatever reason, then maybe I support what the county manager has recommended. Maybe he knows intuitively that there's not a four-year payback in these items and pushing them out two or three years is maybe a more intelligent thing to do. So, I mean, it says in the CIP that there's a four-year return on investment. And if that's the case, then I don't know why we would push that out in the future when in fact we could get an energy savings now and it pays for itself in four years. Last item that I will mention, and this is not to be interpreted as me being opposed to emergency operations or having emergency operations capability in the county, but I thought that our emergency services personnel, our law enforcement personnel, Sheriff Carter and his crew, the county manager, and all the other county employees did a magnificent job during the recent tornado exercise that we had for the county. We can refine plans from that. I don't recall seeing anything or observing anything in this last two weeks that would tell me, that would reinforce the need to have to have a hard-site EOC beneath the courthouse at this juncture. In fact, what I saw was a reinforcement of the need to have redundant communications, adaptability, flexible command post structures so that we can be wherever we need to be around the county and not all hovered together or huddled together in one large palace, Athena, with all the fancy screens and stuff in front of us like they would have at the Pentagon EOC. I would think that what we had this last time and the adaptive nature of how we did emergency response during the tornado exercise reinforced the fact that we need these vans, we need communication systems, maybe get Shane additional radio equipment and communications equipment so he can tie him with Viper at the state level, give him the communications capacity, but not necessarily fix everything below the courthouse where everybody comes into a real tight congested area where there's limited parking and tying ourselves back to that facility for emergency purposes. Now, I know that there's a 911 component to this as well, backup 911, and I support us having a backup capacity, but I don't know that tying those two together as justification under the courthouse is a smart thing. So, that's a lot of stuff. There's more items in the notes that I gave back to the county manager. I would suggest, you know, I'm open to what the other commissioners want to do, I just think that there may be some things we can tighten up in that CIP.
Is there any other?
I'd like to echo some of Jim's concerns there, plus the fact that on Ryan Road, did we ever get the grant for helping them do that?
Which grant?
Well, you said...
Clyde Ryan.
Clyde Ryan, yeah.
Yes, sir, we're still waiting on the EDA.
So, we don't have the grant?
We don't have the $800,000 grant yet, no, sir. But we are, we received, you can't call preliminary approval, you get a preliminary, the project looks good letter in that we want additional information. So, last week, we completed that information. It was delivered to them today and hopefully we'll have word on that in the next two to three weeks.
Okay. And some of the statements that you made in the CIP, you indicated that our revenue doesn't look as good the next year and yet a lot of what's on CIP is based on income and revenue. Otherwise, we've gotta go into debt and borrow more money with more interest. And I have a problem with that, especially if we're not expecting the same amount of revenue.
So do I, that's why I put it in there.
Okay. And speaking to the CCC things, I realize that, you know, what they're talking about is buildings, but there's also equipment that's gotta go into those buildings that we'd have to fund. So, I'm not sure this is the time to do it. So, I have real concern with that.
Well, that's why I've pushed those projects back out, because we don't have the funding. Typically, when you're looking at the CIP, the things that we're committing to right away are the things that are in the first year. Then you push the others out and you make them available as revenues become available. But, you know, the deal with the tax rate increases, as you look at mainly the education component of this CIP, you have $52 million requested from the Board of Education and, you know, around 20 from the community college. The only way we're gonna get to $75 million, thereabouts, is by borrowing money if those are plans that we're going to approve. And you have to understand that we have a Board of Education that's somewhat impatient and will be pushing us to do these buildings and do these improvements. Talk about the HVAC projects for a minute. Two or three years ago, I have to ask Lisa, when I suggested it to the superintendent, was that we would support them with a guaranteed contract where you hire a group to come in, do an energy evaluation of the facilities, and then you use performance savings to pay the debt back on those improvements.
But we don't have those figures yet.
They're not in favor of that.
Oh, no.
And the main reason...
They don't get it at all.
Well, that is true. And I think, you know, they would like to use the energy savings for other means. We want to use the energy savings to repay the debt. So, there's the rub.
Yeah, I was out around my community today all morning through Broadway and that area out in there, talking to some of the businessmen. They said they can't stand any more taxes, period. Right. And so, when we look at the budget, we're gonna have to start looking at what can we do with our current revenue resources that we know that we've got coming in.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I'm finished, Joe. I'd address this to the county manager. I think that the expenditures that we're looking at under the CIP for next year are absolute minimum expenditures to maintain certain obligations that we have with the possible exception of the Lee County emergency operations. That could perhaps deserve some additional discussion as far as I'm concerned. The industrial park expenditure, the expenditure on the high school, and the emergency, Lee County emergency operations, all of those, Mr. Crumpton, if I'm not mistaken, have been figured into your projections. And the revenue that will be available to us, your best estimate at this time to be something that would not require going out and raising additional taxes, is this true?
That is correct. And I didn't get to talk about the EOC just yet, but we have to move fairly quickly on that if we're gonna do that. And the reason being is, you know, we have funds that are available to us for this project, but they have to be spent by the end of the next fiscal year. If we don't spend the funds by the end of the next fiscal year, they won't be used for that purpose.
Is this the 911?
Yes, this is what's currently in the 911 budget. So, before we can really get going, hire an architect and that kind of stuff, we do have to put a justification before this board more than what's in the CIP, and Shane and I are putting that together. You know, emergency management is a county responsibility and currently the EOC is housed at the city of Sanford. And I guess it's good and bad that, you know, the progress...
The 911 system is in the city of Sanford?
No, the EOC is at the city of Sanford as well. We use the basement of City Hall for the EOC exercises and progress energy exercise. We didn't get to do the progress energy exercise last week. We were doing the real thing. So, when we do have to have everybody in the EOC, it's way too small for what's going on.
Well, okay, I had not completed my comments, but thank you. That answers. It is planned, it is something that will not require additional taxation. I think a lot of this has to do with one's understanding of the importance of certain basic fundamental infrastructure programs that we have underway. And I have understood that we have to move on the emergency management facility.
EOC?
Yeah. Because of the funds that are available and then that window closes. I don't think there's anything extravagant in this budget that we've proposed. I think it's absolute minimum to do for this county what this county must have done as we move forward as a progressive, forward-looking county. I hear the conservatism, the no tax, I mean, that's something that is still playing itself out there to some, not to all. Not to all by a long shot, because we all have constituents that we talk to and people that we know who look at the glass as half-full rather than half-empty, that look for promise and opportunity and not putting the brakes on things that are not unduly excessive, but that are very fundamental to our government, to moving ahead.
See, John, I'm looking at, is that the 4.5 million?
No, sir, that should be 1.7. And actually, we think we can do it for less than that.
How much of that would be 9/11 funds?
Nearly all of it.
So, I'd just like to urge the board to, you know, resist the temptation to do something that would have the potential of putting us behind rather than keeping us at pace and perhaps putting us ahead so long as it's not going to be unduly impacting our budget, which is we're soon to look at, but which has been factored in. I'm comfortable with it. I don't see anything here that would be a disservice to the citizens of Lee County. And I just would urge that we move forward on this sort of minimum basis and cause these things to happen, which are important. Education, of course, emergency management, and then our commi- Education, of course, emergency management, and then our commitment to the industrial park, which we have talked about for years as being something sorely lacking, if we're to have an economic development program, especially in our industrial park, which attracts new business and industry, and this is a part of showing our good faith there. I don't think that that's at question. I don't believe I heard that at all, but I'm just saying, this comes as a, as a minimum package that the county manager has put together and recommended, and for me, that's good enough.
Mr. Hayes, I would like to also offer, there's a third set of constituents out there, we've quoted two of them now, ones that said, no, no tax increases, ones that you say that perhaps are amenable to increasing taxes to accomplish some of these things.
I didn't say to increasing taxes, I just say that oftentimes, things get couched in this sense that this is what your constituents hear, and I'm saying that there are other people in the community who would say, it all depends on what you're talking about.
Right.
So, you have to look at each item as we come to it, like we'll be doing on our budget pretty soon, to see where the value is, and what might require increase, and what might not.
Sure. I would just offer that there's a third set of constituents out there that we're hearing from as well, that are wanting us to reduce taxes, not just hold the line. So, you know, there are, there are people out there that are, that are struggling, a number of folks in the community are struggling, and, and that's why, in part, I, I wish that we would give great scrutiny to each and every line item, perhaps more so this year than we have in years past, to every line item in the capital budget, as well as in the operational budget for the county, that we've done our due diligence, and we've, we've evaluated every possibility, so we're not, we're not unnecessarily expensing projects or that don't, that don't necessarily have to be done this year, or they, or they can be done more intelligently. And I'm, and I, like you, believe that we have to own up to our responsibility for the school project, that's the biggest, the biggest wedge we have for this year. Obviously, that has to be done, we've got to do that. And we have to, and I don't oppose doing the industrial park upgrade, because 90% of that or more is being expensed by a, a grant, that once we receive it, I'll, I'll support that as well, it's already been arranged. I'm only arguing that, that maybe we ought to take a look at decoupling the 911 requirement, or the 911 project, from the planned expansion below the jail, that we take a look at other possibilities in the county before we lock in on that one. I don't know that we've evaluated thoroughly, I haven't seen any evaluation that says we would look at other pot, other potential facilities in the county, perhaps that are more accessible, that have better parking, they're not stuck in the middle of downtown off of Hornet Boulevard, you know, I mean, there are some, I saw some magnificent facilities during the tornado drill that we made use of, that, that I thought we did a great job of using and employing, of, of ramping up rapidly for emergency purposes, and I, and maybe none of the above will work, and we end up back below the courthouse, and that's what we do, I just say, let's be judicious.
Commissioner Reeves, did you-
Yeah, we still have to do that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Reeves, did you have some comments?
I did. I want to say to Commissioner Womack, I certainly appreciate your comments and your concerns, but this arena, this agenda is not the place for us to try and figure out what's what. We are going to have workshops, and we've had some very strong issues that we'll have to consider for the continued existence of some of the programs. So, I would ask that we consider doing that in the workshop, as opposed to trying-
Well, I understand, this is just a recommendation.
What is?
What we look at now. The CIP is a plan.
It's planned, it's a planned plan.
You still have to-
And if the funds aren't there, the project doesn't go-
You still have to, you know, tie it to your general fund budget.
Yeah, it's one you vote on. Okay, so, what we're voting on now is to do what, John?
Is to approve the plan, and then-
Okay, but if we approve the plan, does that mean that it moves forward, or do we wait and discuss it during the budget?
Staff moves it forward, and we'll be discussing those projects that need to be funded in the next year's budget during the budget process.
The only thing that I think we're rocking down here is the fact that if we say we approve the plan, then, then, then the justification is approved, the, the, if, if there were going to be further studies that would have been needed, they wouldn't necessarily be needed, they would, we would go ahead, for example, on, on the, the jail basement, that, that would be approved to, to, to estimate that project and, and take bids to do the work, right?
No, sir.
It wouldn't?
We would still have to come back before you to get an architect approved for the project.
Okay.
And, you know, when we're doing, when we're getting that approval, we'll be justifying the, the project.
Okay, I, I guess the concern I have is that, you know, some of the things that we mentioned, which don't seem to me like we're going to be able to do without raising the debt service limit. We talk about raising the debt limit, we're talking about raising the interest that we're going to have to pay on that debt. I disagree with Richard in that, that there's a lot of people out there that are hurting bad enough right now, that they can't stand any more taxes. I don't know who Richard's talking to, but people I talk to are the everyday citizens, you know, out of my district, plus here in town. And I just think we have to be careful with what we spend, if it's not absolutely necessary this year. And people can make do with the things that they're doing, I, I just don't think that now's the time to do it.
But, that's part of the exercise.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
I understand that, and that's the reason I'm voicing my opinion about what needs to be done now.
They're passing something that's going to come up again.
Yes.
And, you know, if you don't have the money, and you're not willing to borrow the money, then you just don't do it.
Yeah, you can do it.
We just keep pushing the projects.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, you know, that's the reason I asked, you know, the technical thing about, what's the process, because if we're going to vote on it again, we can go light on it by light on it to vote on it, that's fine. But otherwise, we need to talk about it now.
One last comment I would make, Mr. Crumpton, is that, is that I'm not confident, and now, I, my numbers could be off, but I'm not confident that we're following our policy, a 15% debt limit on the, on the, out of the general fund for our debt service?
We're at 11% right now.
Okay, but with this CIP, you've already run the numbers based on the anticipated revenues, and you believe we're at or below that 15%?
That's actually why I keep pushing the projects out every year, is to make sure that we don't get close to that.
That includes the interest that would be on that amount?
When we, when we take a look at our debt capacity, we normally have a DAB and POUR, our consultants take a look at it and tell us when we can borrow again. I haven't had them do that analysis right now, because I know we can't. You know, we don't really have the cash flow to, in the growth in our tax base, we're, we're going to be talking a lot about that in, in the coming weeks, because part of the issues we have with our budget right now were some assumptions that were made with our debt service that didn't come to reality, and now we're going to get to pay the piper this year. So, you know, you have to be careful with that. I don't think we were excessive in borrowing, but then again, when things change, you know, you end up with some holes, and you have to make some changes, so.
Now, that calculation you did, that you say we're under the 15%, included the two or two and a half million dollars in debt service for the middle school, that we didn't anticipate having to, to finance?
Which, the, oh, the, the one-
Or is it 1.5? There's a 1.6 million, okay, for Sandley Middle School that we got to pick up this year?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's built into those calculations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have one more question. When we signed the contract for Lee Senior renovation, why wasn't the gymnasium included in that? Why are we talking about doing that now?
Did we sign any contract for the rest?
We didn't, we didn't sign, we didn't sign that contract, that's, that's-
Well, you approved it, I mean, you approved Lee Senior renovation.
You approve a dollar amount-
Okay.
That goes to them for, you know, specific items.
So, so the gym wasn't included in that dollar amount?
I thought the gym was.
Why are we seeing it in here then?
Because they continue to do other work. The old gym, they used lottery proceeds for it, and then they, you know, for some reason, they've come back with Sizzletorium, or the auditorium, that's right, they, they didn't do the auditor-
Well, the auditorium, okay, the auditorium. So, was it left out?
Yes, it was, because the, the, when the bids came in, they had to pull some things back, because there wasn't enough money to do everything, and the auditorium was one of them that did not get done. Now-
Wasn't it an alternate?
It was an alternate.
An alternate, if they had the money, but-
That's right. And I would suspect that as they get closer to the end of the project, they will be coming back to you to use the contingency money to use in the auditorium. So, you know, as you get, you know, closer to the end of the project, they'll know exactly what their costs, you know, will be, they'll have a better idea there, what their change orders had, had to be, and then, you know, if they had to use any of the contingency funds. If the contingency funds are left over, they can come to you and ask, ask you to, to expend those funds.
Do we have anybody on the board or in the county that's overseeing any of that?
Sir, there, there, well, we're, we're overseeing, when they set, submit the bill, we review, you know, the bills that they're submitting, but we do not oversee their construction projects.
And by-
Yeah, and they would have to agree to allow us to put a construction manager on site that reported to us, and I can tell you, this board would not agree to that. The Board of Education would not agree for that.
Actually, there are several counties that are doing that very successfully, too.
But, they do have, of course, the architect, who is periodically-
He has an inspector on the job, but he's-
We have left that, we have left that up to them.
Right, and Mr. Pittman, who I think, what, clerk of the works, he kind of, and his staff, but they did not hire. Let me just make-
He still also has a man on payroll that's capable of looking after some of that at John.
Um, let me just add this, in defense of the auditorium, I, I would suggest, and this plays out downstream, but don't please think that when you hear the word auditorium, that's a bad word, it's a very good word, and a very necessary renovation of that high school. It's the only place that we have and could have for the whole city and county, that would have that type of configuration for both education and cultural purposes. I think, and it's really worn out like the rest of the school was. Now, I've been holding my breath and hoping that it might come in under this budget, but I really don't know that it will. But, I, I'm just, I don't want to dissuade you, but I want to say, you know, keep an open mind to the value of one auditorium of some quality, that would allow our total public school system to have access to that. And I think that was part of the notion that Southern Lee could come there and use it, that it would not be just for Lee Central or Lee County High School, but that it would serve our, our entire community, it needs upgrading greatly. Let me-
Okay, we've, we've heard some good discussion here, and John, just let me recap the, for the Lee County industrial park is contingent upon grant money.
Yeah, you'll still have to approve budget amendments when we get the grant money to approve the project, so that will still have to come back to the board again.
The Lee County High School renovations is being funded by the sales tax increase.
Yes.
And the other item for the next fiscal year is the Lee County Emergency Ops, and that's funded primarily from 911, but we can still discuss that before it's done.
We'll have to bring that to you.
Okay, so-
And there was a motion been made?
Robert?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve the 2012, 2006 planning documents, CIP program. Is there any further discussion?
I'd invite Commissioner Womack to bring the same document back to the board during the work session, and raise any issue he wants to, he just don't want us to do it every day, every meeting.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Six to one.
Let me give a memo.
Okay, next on the, organize my piles, sir. Update from the April 16th tornado, Shane Seacrofts and John Crumpton. This is also where we need to remember our budget amendment. Shane?
Chairman Board, as far as an update, I know we've got Sheriff Carter here, we also have Joe Cherry with Solid Waste, who can give us an update on debris collection. I'm pleased to say that really, for the emergency services office, the response part of it in into recovery, we're, we're getting back to normal operations, and that, that's nice. It's been a good change. We've demobilized from the community college, I would like to thank Landis Phillips and Joey Schuh and the community college for letting us stay out there for, basically for two weeks. We did show that we could sit up in a remote location and operate. It wasn't the easiest thing to do, it wasn't the ideal situation, but we, you know, we made it work. As far as our department, we're basically now starting to tally the numbers for the different departments responding and assisted with us. We've been working with Finance Office, Harney County, Moore County, Chatham County, they're departments, we'll actually get back and fill out the public assistance request to reimburse them for their equipment. We've been working very closely with the community relations team, which Graham Bingham with FEMA, he's here today with us, we've been working very closely with him, they've actually been going out and going door to door. They've been on that endeavor now for about, I guess, going on two weeks, and as of our eight o'clock meeting this morning, they only had 13 locations left to visit on our list of damaged properties. And then, we couldn't let them have two easy days, so we gave them 30 additional properties that our GIS department had located, actually using overlays. So, what Don and his group had looked for was blue tarts, shingles missing off a roof, you know, here we are in a day and time that you can look, basically, at these overhead shots and see shingles missing off roofs. So, they've been out working on that very closely, and, and it goes about the same thing, you know, they've gone door to door, and we're still having that same thing, people have not registered with FEMA, they've not gone out to the disaster recovery center and registered. One of the good things, he did give me this one, was some good news, that we have had 359 registrants go out now, and, and actually register with FEMA. And, you know, from our presentation, we were a little over 450 properties that were damaged, and we found the additional 30, which I think all but two of those were actually, there were damage there. So, you know, we're getting up in the 480, 490 mark now on properties. So, I think a good number for us, we're shooting for 500. When we see that we've had 500 people register, I think we're getting to that point, that, you know, we've made the rounds, FEMA's done an excellent job going out, going door to door, spreading the word, they're planning on putting some signs out that has the numbers, and that's, that's all part of, you know, educating people. One of the things I know that we've all seen going out, people will tell you, hey, we're having insurance, and we don't need to register with FEMA, and that's not the case. If you've had any kind of damage to your property, you need to make sure that you register with FEMA. Yesterday was a very busy day at the DRC, the McSwain Center, they had over 500 applicants yesterday for food vouchers through DSS. So, it stayed lined up and packed out there yesterday, from time they opened until they closed yesterday. So, you know, that could be anything from a household that their power was off for eight hours, that they get some, some money to help replenish their supplies of food in both freezer, refrigerator, but they're having some difficulties, it, it gives them, it gives them a little bit of a crush to, to lean on, help them get started. One of the things we talked about with our office, and, and this goes for all the responders in the county, not just our office, but, you know, the county's part for the emergency operations part of it, we're there to bridge that gap, from the time this storm started on Saturday, to help people get back to, I'm not going to say a normal day-to-day operation or normal day-to-day lives, but it's, we're kind of, we bridge that gap, like with our shelters. It gave them somewhere to go on Saturday night, it gave them somewhere to go on Sunday night. And as you saw, those numbers fell off greatly, in three days, those numbers were gone. You have organizations like the American Red Cross, we had Badness Men, and the Nice Samaritan's Person, I mean, these organizations come out from everywhere to help us. One of the things I was concerned with last week, when the tornado's hit down in Alabama, was it going to take Lee County or North Carolina out of the limelight, and from what I've seen, it hadn't. The outpouring of assistance for office for assistance today has been unreal. Nancy has been swamped with phone calls, and that's a good thing. We're two weeks out now, so normally, two weeks, that's when it starts to fall off, and, you know, people kind of forget about, and they go on to the next event, or they go on to the next activity. But, we've still had groups coming in today offering their services, and that's good, because we are just scratching the surface right now on the recovery for our county. It's going to be a very slow process. We've heard less complaints about insurance adjusters getting out, so I think that the insurance companies are getting their people in here, and they're starting to provide some help. You can go out, you could write a book on the stories that we've heard. And we've had our fifth assessment, and when I say assessment, that's going from start to finish across the county. We completed that this morning at 11 o'clock, and I'll, I'll make sure I give Mr. Crumpton that report seeking for that information on to you, but, you know, the things we went and looked at for is any damage whatsoever to structure, how many people were there, if anyone was missing, which, thank goodness, there's no one missing right now. We went through and got the number of how many pets was in the household, how many pets were missing. Out of this entire process, we've had four pets reported missing, start to finish. And this has been a very, very thorough assessment. If you think about it, the storm tracked it 10 and a half miles, which 4,500 structures, whether it's residential or business, and we've added, we've gone from 10 and a half miles to over 13 miles, get close to 14 miles now from, from damage from where it started to where it stopped. So, we've definitely increased that number. People have just really been good about getting out, helping us, tax departments provided people, animal patrols provided help, building inspections, and the fire departments in the county. So, that's been very successful, so we'll have those numbers for you. the county, so that's been very successful, so we'll have those numbers for you also. I will turn it over to the sheriff.
Before you do that.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I was at around the area out there, Thomas Road.
Yes, sir.
Papa Road, there was three people that I talked to, one had registered, one had not because of the insurance thing, and I told him, I said, you really need to go do that, and so I think maybe he might, but he never really made a committal. But one of the ones that I talked to that had registered, he was indicating that the people next door, he hadn't seen them since their trailer blew away. I don't know if these people are getting the information on, is there any way we could...
Anyone that was displaced that we had a record of, that was provided room and board by the American Red Cross, or was put up by one of the various groups around, the counties provided room and board in motels, we've gone to those motels, Mr. Crumpton's talked to the motels, Red Cross has, the managers there were made aware of us, they could pass that information on flyers, were handed out flyers, were pushed up under the doors for the rooms, so, you know, we have tried every means possible to get that information out, and, you know, we'll continue to push out our press releases, the community relations team will continue to be here, and those are no longer in need for them, so that's all we can do is to keep continuing to educate, I'll ask the board to spread the word also, that's important to get that information out there.
I found one, I think it was at Lynch Farm Road, and that hadn't registered yet, and I told him, I said, hey, you know, you need transportation because he lost his truck, or his house, and I said, if you need transportation, here's my card, call me and I'll take you, but I haven't heard from him, so I'm hoping he did.
Yes, sir.
Shane, I would like for you to just comment briefly, and this may be a loaded question, so if you don't want to answer, you want the FEMA folks to answer for you, I'm just curious as to what the rationale is for us not sharing completely and transparently with the federal and the state authorities, all of the data we have respectively on the properties that we've assessed and we've looked at. I'm sure, I've been told by several people that there are reasons why we can't share data, I'd just like to know, what's the rationale, what's the explanation of why? If FEMA's got data on damages they've assessed or properties they've visited, they can't share that directly with us by address, by name, by assessment?
That is correct, and I will, Grant, if you want to address that, I know that it's a federal law that was enacted, I think in 2007, it's a privacy law, prior to 2007, when they were going out and going door to door, they actually could have a piece of paper with them that was basically a fill-in-the-blank, you know, I, John Doe, give you permission to share this information, that information can be passed on, because the privacy act of 2007, FEMA was no longer able to do that, we can pass that information on to FEMA, which we have.
Okay, so we are sharing upwards, but they're not necessarily sharing downwards?
It is a federal law that cannot get, and that's not just a Lee County issue, we had a meeting at the DROC last week, that was one of the things we were discussing, and, you know, all the counties are in the same agreement, why can't that information be shared, and it's basically that law.
Could I ask that at some point, when you do have a chance to take a breather, that you document and send up to the county manager and to the commissioners, what kinds of data or what kinds of information would be useful to you so that we can contact our legislators in Washington, and see if we can't get that altered so that we can go back to having a disclosure form where people can authorize FEMA to share that data? I think it's useful to have the left hand and the right hand knowing what each other's doing when we're in these disaster scenarios.
Absolutely, and I'll take care of that.
Shane, I have one more to bring up with you. I got a call, little lady lives about, I don't know exactly how far, but let's just say 1,000, 1,500 feet from the nearest right-of-way, a public road, she lives on a private road.
Linda Springs Road?
Broadway, Rice Road. And they're saying they can't help her because she can't get debris out to the right-of-way. Well, if she could get her debris out to the right-of-way, she could carry it onto the dump, so what can we do to help folks like that? That's...
We're taking care of it, I did get a phone call this morning that in the event we can't get this stuff taken to the road, that there's some FEMA assistance that's going to be made available to the counties, because we're not one of the counties having that problem, but there's some FEMA money that's out there that can provide some assistance to get that to the right-of-way so that our debris contractor can pick it up.
Can I give you a name after the meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we got the same problem with swearing in Lane as well?
Several places, yes, and another place off Rice Road, same way, private roads, so we're working on it. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff, he can give you an update on law enforcement, before I can give him an update. Just to give you an update.
It's here.
We've been in this together for two weeks, but we're starting to think alike, and that's starting to scare me. When we first started this, we were at about 40 outside law enforcement officers coming in to assist us, we're working with the box shift.
Twenty per shift.
Yeah, 20 per shift, we're down to 16 now, so we're eight and eight, and we're getting ready to put in for a mission, starting Friday night at 7:00 PM, we're dropping that number from 16 down to 10, so as you see, we're starting the trickle-down effect, we still need to keep these places protected, they had an incident last night that is proof that we do not need to let up on the security in these locations, there's still people out there that are there to take advantage of people, and I wonder if you want to address that with someone?
We did have a theft, we had about 100 foot of copper pipe that was stolen out of a residence, and so we're going to have to ramp up our security in this area to prevent that, people can still slip in on foot at night, and it's unfortunate, but we're going to be, we're going to continue to do what we've been doing, we're going to keep St. Andrews closed down, and we're going to monitor these areas on a week-by-week basis, but that's been my concern from day one, is the folks that will come in, and we don't want these folks to be victimized anymore, so we're going to do everything we can to protect them. We are supplementing these law enforcement officials, these state law enforcement officials with our deputy sheriffs, and we have a lot of folks that are working a lot of long hours, but we're going to keep it up, we're not, we don't want to drop the ball now, we want to keep up what we've been doing, and it's going to be a long process.
My understanding is that there were a couple caught out in the Thomas Roads area, is that still being monitored also?
Yes, it is, it's still being monitored.
Because every time somebody speaks, they talk about St. Andrews, but there's...
We've got all the areas that were affected, Papa Springs, Thomas Road, Rice Road, St. Andrews, the Ken Dale Drive area, and we've got a couple of areas in the outs, in other areas of the county that we're checking as well, so.
Sheriff, who's paying the bill for the out-of-county deputies that came in here?
Right now, the county's paying for it.
The state is.
State's paying that bill?
Yeah. They'll be reimbursed by the...
Okay, do we pick up any share of that?
No, sir. Unless they, if they came and they stayed in a hotel, we paid for the hotel. Most of the meals were donated, so we haven't had...
Rivers did all the cooking, right?
So we haven't had to pay for a lot of meals for these guys that have come in, and now we're using Department of Corrections folks, and a lot of them are traveling in, yeah, traveling in and out, so the hotel bills are going down, and we don't expect to see a lot of food bills either.
I have a question about stealing copper, just basically, how do people, what do people do when they steal the copper out of a house, do they go in and rip it?
Well, let's not give anybody any ideas.
No, no. But no, I've heard a lot, you know, it's like gold, and people go for it, and they rip it out, I suppose what I'm really wondering about is, there's no way to really, before the fact hardly, find out and see and make arrests, I mean, it's very brazen, I would think, that people go in and can do this, and of course, you can't scout every inch of the territory, but it's happening right out, I mean, sometimes right sort of under your nose, that they're over here in the dark ripping it out of a house or something?
Well, the thieves will exploit any weakness that they see, and a lot of these folks are being driven by addictions, which makes people do things out of the ordinary, so we know we've just got to apply, keep the pressure applied and...
And where these goods are sold, is there a pretty good, I mean, is that revealing anything, a good network that they're going to get caught on the other end?
That's where our investigators stay busy at, is checking these places and folks that have been hidden and so.
It's not just abandoned buildings, people living in their homes that are being victimized, they're on trips, they're at the agency, they can buy some things.
It's what we fight the most on a daily basis, is thieves and larceny. Saying lots of dishonesty.
Would you go so far as to say that it's, is it sort of a spontaneous kind of thing, or is it racketeered, is it, I mean, does it get planned and processed, is it?
All of the above.
All of the above.
Or in the moment, got to have it?
The other question I had was, Mr. Crumpton, this money that we have approved, I believe in the consent agenda, is...
Sir, we have not approved this.
Oh, okay, I thought that we, it was in the consent agenda.
No, sir.
Is this money reimbursable, or is this totally out of our pocket?
Some is, and some isn't, the overtime and the reserve and temp officers that we use that were not scheduled, we'll be making a claim for that, the phones for the EOC are not reimbursable, hard hats vests and other safety equipment, I would imagine they're not reimbursable either, the laptop for the EOC was not reimbursable.
Did that get lost or just broke down?
It would not work. It was, it was the PIO laptop, and we were having problems getting our messages out, and so we have to have one that works, so we had to buy a new one. The hotel rooms will be reimbursable, some of the EOC office supplies will be reimbursable, since we keep the radios, batteries and the chargers, and we needed them anyway, that's not reimbursable, and then the fuel used, we'll make claim for that, for reimbursement. And I think, you know, from this side of the FEMA equation, everybody, you know, this is a reimbursement process, we spend the money, then we make claim, and FEMA's gotten a lot better with the reimbursements, mainly because they let you know the rules a lot better upfront of what they're going to reimburse, so you don't have to long draw down things, but we are using fund balance to float this event alone, and it's one of the main reasons, you need a fund balance. There are counties in the east, I'm talking with Senator Atwater on Saturday, who have made an emergency appeal to the state for funds, so they can pay for the things like the sheriff's been doing, and fortunately, we're obviously not real flush with cash, but we have enough to respond when our citizens need the help, so.
I'd like to add that I think that this is about 25% to 30% lower than we were expecting for the first go-around, I was pretty pleased with this amount.
This is really just the first week, too, so, but we're seeing the costs go down, and, you know, we're doing a good job of managing the cost, you know, that first initial couple of days, you're really doing whatever you got to do to help the citizens, and then after that, you start really trying to manage things back down, and I think we've done a good job of that.
So along that regard, in your, to be added, are the items for additional consideration, there is a budget amendment where county manager and the finance director are requesting to move those funds. Motion has been made to approve the budget amendment, any discussion?
Thank you for the job, both of you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I got one comment, I was looking at this, and the biggest call time we got is fuel other than overtime costs, and ExxonMobil showed an $11 billion profit in the first quarter, does anyone know how to get a donation out of them?
Thanks Shane, thanks Sheriff, thanks FEMA, thank you for coming. Motion has been made, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, motion passes. We're under old business, item C.
Madam Chair, I move that the board defer consideration of item 4C, presentation of the annual DOT secondary road construction program at this meeting.
Okay, motion has been made to defer consideration of this item, this requires a majority vote, Commissioner Odom, you made the motion, will you speak to it first?
Yes, ma'am, I've just had some calls, and I feel like we might have made a mistake in rejecting DOT's suggested program, and I'd just like us to have time to reconsider this, I've had some calls from the people that are involved, and I just feel like we need to...
Any further discussion?
Just a question, how would you see that developing, Mr. Odom? In other words, more time to, personally, to hear from people, or to reexamine, or all of the above, I mean, what will we accomplish between now and the next meeting?
Well, I'd like to see us reexamine our decision on Thomas William Road, and that doesn't mean we can't support Commissioner Womack on his suggestion to work on Joe Matthews' road, but I'd like to see us, these people are taxpayers, and they've waited 20 years to get their road paved, they got part of it paved, and the reason to get it all paved is run out of funds, so all they like is four tenths of a mile, and there's four property owners out there, and they're all want their road paved, and I just think we need to revisit and do what we feel like is right.
I support what Commissioner Odom is proposing here, because that's in my district, and frankly, I was one of the chief proponents for deferring, oh, I'm sorry, for dropping that off the list, and I would like to hear from those residents myself, I haven't had a chance, I just learned of it today, I still advocate getting Joe Matthews' road completed, it's just a tenth or two tenths of a mile, and I think it needs to get done for those commuters.
I do have an update on Joe Matthews' road, it came late Friday, the DOT reported that the remaining piece of this road that needs to be paved, the reason it hadn't been paved was it was railroad right-of-way, and they found a letter that they had received that would grant them the right-of-way, they just didn't execute all the documents to have the right-of-way transferred to the DOT, so once that is all transpired, they actually feel like they'll be able to pave the road, and it won't actually be part of this, they can pave it under different funds, so it should take Joe Matthews' road out of discussion.
Yeah, I think this is a good move on the part of the board, and I hope it'll get 100%, because quite frankly, we need to take a closer look for next year or the following year to see what roads they are targeting, and start the discussion early enough to have some end to it.
Let me say something about that, too, I'm on the TARPA board, and we have to report back June 1st, the first meeting in June, as to which roads we want to include on priority lists, so you need to be thinking about that, and we'll talk about that.
How do we get that list that they're even considering?
I can give a list to you.
By the next meeting?
Yeah, I can get it to you this week, send it to everybody, email.
Motion has been made to defer considering approving the program until the next meeting, Doc?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, that Thomas Williams Road, they mentioned something about abandonment, it looks like it's been abandoned, I've been down it.
You don't want to get out there, it's too wet.
But it was on the approved list, and those people waited 20 years for it.
It could be...
Is there? Because I wasn't out there, I didn't see it.
I saw some indication that...
Those probably my tracks, Rob.
No, not contract, I saw flag in several locations, and cutting the flag, I don't know where you stopped, or...
Well, they must have been at it since I've been out.
Right, they might have, but they're doing some, also doing some clearing on the back end of the road, like that, could actually make a lovely development.
If it's abandoned without the landowner's approval, he doesn't tell me, he wasn't one of them, he told us, yeah.
Does this delay, does this, Mr. Crumpton, if we put it off till the next day?
They were fine with it, for the 23rd.
Motion has been made to defer considering this secondary road construction program, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion passes. We're now to new business, item A1, pre-trial release, we thought we would get you up here early because of moving you up to the top, and here we are, a minute and 10, an hour and 10 minutes, so thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Andrea Kern, I run the pre-trial release program for Lee County taxpayers, and I'm here to inform y'all on Senate Bill 756, did everyone get a copy of that bill, or did you all need?
I did forward it to, I don't know if they still have the copy, but you might want to just summarize it real quick.
If you have a copy.
If you summarize it, we'll probably take a closer look. If you summarize it, we'd probably take a closer look.
And I have written notes, so I do stay on task, and hopefully this will be short and sweet. It's very hard for me to do that, so bear with me. Uh, in a nutshell, this bill, if it is bugged in, is going to raise taxes eventually. We're going to have jail overcrowding. Uh, we are going to have unsafe working conditions for our jail staff. We're going to have more defendant lawsuits, because there will be more defendants in the jail. Uh, we might have to build a new jail if the population goes up. We have other bills on the table. I'm trying to grab y'all's attention. We have other bills that are on the table, too, that I'm not going to discuss today, and I'm glad to discuss at a later time, that are more than likely going to pass, and they will change, um, housing situations as far as we are going to have to keep defendants that are convicted of misdemeanors less than 90 days in our county jails. So that's going to raise our population already, so we're, we're getting ready for that already, and now this bill comes up. If you look at the bill and look at line six on that bill, the, the main thing that I'm looking at is that it is going to provide that no state or local funds will be, may be appropriated to or used for the support of any pretrial release program. Okay, that would, no state funds are used anyway, so why that's in there, that's already been decided years ago. That's why our program got shut down in the first place years ago. Um, it was brought back in by the county, because we know it works, and it does work. Um, but once those local funds are taken, all the pretrial programs that are out there in the state of North Carolina are run by county funds. No state funds uses, used. So it would, effective June 30th, 2011, shut us down, all, all of the programs. I know a lot of y'all know about the pretrial program, and I'm going to briefly, um, we manage our jail population, the program does, through community supervision. This, this can include just regular supervision, where they call in by landline, proving they're still in our jurisdiction, um, or we can use electronic monitoring in-house arrest for those, um, that we deem necessary for that type of monitoring. Thus far this fiscal year, 14,495 jail bed days have been saved. So that's huge. That's over $14,000 in bed space that's been saved by releasing appropriate eligible defendants into our community and supervising them. Uh, it's, it costs, it's much cheaper than a jail bed, which is $61.15 for Lee Counties.
What is it?
$61.15.
$61.
Now, that was, that was given to me back in 1995 by Ms. Mentor, so that's, you know, some years ago, but that is the figure that we use up to this point.
Okay.
Um, that amounts to $886,000 and some change. That's huge, and that's just for the supervision part of the program. That's the ones that I supervise on the outside of the jail. Um, I would also like to point out at this time that, um, since October 2008, the monthly average in the jail has never been over capacity, and that's huge for us in the jail. 126 is the capacity, and we have not gone over that since October 2008. The yearly capacity has never gone over that average since the program came back. So, you know, we're doing, this is a positive model of this program, and we tweaked it, and we're still tweaking it. Everybody works together. The jail staff is great. The sheriff's department is great in supporting it. The DA's office is involved. Defense attorneys are involved. The clerk's office is involved. Magistrate's office, and it all works very well to save tax, taxpayers. Today, our jail population is 83, well within that capacity. Um, I'm supervising 61 defendants that are out in community supervision, whether regular or house arrest. Um, also, I want to stress, because this is, if anybody makes phone calls about this bill, this is what's going to be brought up, is that they have no numbers proving the success as far as the failure, failure to appear rate, or actually, the show rate. I just wanted to stress, in fiscal year, and I spent a long time pulling cases, getting this figure. Uh, it is accurate, and I have paperwork to back it up through the clerk's office. Fiscal year 2008, 2009, 97% of our defendants show for court. I mean, that, that's great. '09, '10 fiscal year, 98% showed for court. So we're doing a successful program here. Uh, we're not waiting until they fail to report to court, and those that do fail to report, out of all those years, we have one that has a big capture, a nonviolent forgery charge, and that's the only one. Uh, the rest have been brought to court, and their case is disposed of. So I'm very proud of, of that fact, of this program. It shows the success of it. We also manage our population in the jail by expediting certain cases through the system. We move court days up. We contact victims. We, we do the legwork, so that I can hand it over to the DA's office in court, have everything organized, and move those people through the court system. It's not doing them a favor, but it's, it's just moving up those court dates, making it more efficient and effective, so we can get them out of that jail bed space. We shouldn't have to be spending money on someone who can handle their case, they want to plead guilty. You know, it's simple. We just have to make sure all parties are organized. Um, on that note, with the money there, let's see, 4,220 jail bed days have been saved thus far this fiscal year, and that amounts to 258,000 and some change. I mean, that's huge, too. That's just someone going in and organizing, and, and getting everything working, um, most of the time like it should. Um, thus far this year, so here are the numbers. This is what we spent. This is what Lee County taxpayers have spent on the pretrial program thus far this year, $47,903 and some change. And we have saved 1.3 million dollars, over 1.3 million dollars, in cost avoidance. It's just working the system, working, well, I guess it is working the system, getting defendants through that system, providing an alternative, which is what the state has been screaming for, is alternatives to overcrowding. And now they want to tell the counties they cannot spend their money on a program that's proven to work in this county. And I can only speak for Lee County, but I do know other counties, that they've got the numbers to back it up. They're not ballooned. These are numbers from the clerk's office dates. They're compiled by other departments, and then we take them, excuse me, and we figure them out based on what the jail bed cost is. It's very simple. Now I'm going to get real, um, you know, this does not, this does not include the medical costs. Okay, these are just figures of jail beds, okay? Our medical costs, when we get someone who is, needs chemotherapy, and they're locked up in jail, nonviolent crime, they're no risk to the community, I come in and we get them out, and they continue on with their care. Okay, if we don't, taxpayers, they pay that. Okay, that is a huge cost avoidance, sir, for this county. I don't know the budget, because I'm, I don't ask, but I know it's enormous.
Excuse me, interrupting here, but I just had to stand up on the last one. I support everything she's talking about, but especially what she just mentioned. Those folks that, that are sick, nonviolent, that don't need to be in jail, because they're going to cost taxpayers a whole lot of money, we need to get those folks out. And, and let me say this to you, um, I'm not going to get into this here, but if you have a lot of questions about this bill, and who's behind the bill, research that. That may answer some questions for you. But I support, and I can't speak for the sheriffs in the state, but I can tell you, I can almost guarantee you that they're, that they're all going to feel the same way I do, because they, when we run a jail, we think about public safety. We want the people that need to stay in jail to stay in jail, but we do get people that really don't need to be there, and they're going to cost the county a lot if they stay there, of course. So we work every day to manage that, and conjure those broke down.
Well, I would like to head this off in committee. It's my understanding it's now in judiciary, too, and I would like to have all those stats that you gave, um, just now, and if you have some more, and authorize, uh, you know, somebody to sign a letter on behalf of the county, and if it gets as far as them having hearings, you know, I would encourage both of you, and maybe some from this board, to go before the judiciary committee and say, "Don't treat every county the same," you know? And we just need to head it off in committee. I, I seriously doubt whether this would ever pass in the House and needs to get out of the committee, so I'm tempted to head it off in committee right now, while this is before us.
So do we need to send a letter from our board to try to help do that?
I think so.
Well, I, I would think we, and I appreciate hearing the numbers that you just shared with us, but invite the clerk of court to send anything to sheriff department, and then let the manager and our finance director take a look at them, and so that we might send something that we could say, "These are certified figures," and we, this board stands behind them. And then, we, we should also send a copy to the association of county commissioners, and, and include them with our delegation.
Who are on record, uh, supporting your position on opposing this bill.
You know, it's ironic that, that you have something that's working good, and they tell you, "You can't take your own money," and you keep it going. I don't know if that's good government.
I have a question, if you can answer this. What exactly is happening? What, why is something, you know, I sit here and I hear this, and sort of logical what you're saying, I'm saying, yeah, if anybody want to do this, of course, I know we have a great budget gap, and so the knives are out. Is it that simple, or is it? Could you, would you feel free to describe what you think is going on?
My opinion is, this is a straight, this is a bill that doesn't help any taxpayer in North Carolina. It doesn't have, help any county. It helps, it helps an individual occupation. Uh, it's the bail bond industry, and, um, that's just, in a nutshell, they want to raise the secured bond, no unsecured. They're taking the discretion away from the courts. Um, they're taking the power away from counties to make the best choices for their taxpayers, and it is, I have no problem with bondsmen. They do a good service for managing jail population. There's nothing wrong with that business.
But it's a business, and it's a lobbied kind of operation going on, which is pushing this to approval. That helps, to, to know that.
Thank you. You may also want to invite the bar, Alover Bar, to, uh, send the letter to court review program.
Okay. Andrea, did you have anything else?
About done. About wraps it up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
So do we need a motion for the action? Do we take any action, or?
I move.
It would be appropriate, yeah, that we, you know, send a letter and get the others to send a letter as well.
Get all the facts of how much this really saves the county, okay.
I move to do whatever I said earlier. I would give support.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, now, if you need to know what that motion is, Jeff is logged after the...
Call me sometime.
Okay. Next on the, uh, this is, um, A2, discussion of the fiscal year 2011, 12 budget process. Mr. Crompton.
Yes, ma'am. I hope the board will indulge me for a minute as, as I go over, um, what the schools submitted us for their budget message. The budget message you have in your packet is eight pages long. The budget message we received from them last year was 26 pages long. So, um, I was quite surprised that, uh, at the message, and, um, called the superintendent last week to talk to him, and was informed that that was, at this time, all that we would be getting. A budget message is supposed to show the total amount of the school's budget, which is the entire amount, including federal, state, and local sources. This budget message does not show any of that. It falls well short of meeting the statutory requirements for boards of education. As you recall, a few weeks ago, the school superintendent, um, asked that the board of commissioners extend our deadline for them to submit their budget, which we did. So I was quite surprised that, uh, on the, it wasn't even the date that they had originally said that they were, they were going to send the request to us. They hastily approved the local funding request and had the superintendent forward it to us in this form. The request was approved 48 hours after the largest natural disaster in our county's history, which, um, I received on Tuesday morning, and really didn't get to look at it much until the following week. So I was quite surprised at what we got. I guess because he didn't have enough time, this budget message from the superintendent doesn't have a lot in it. As a matter of law, it does not meet the minimum requirement, and will require us to ask for more information to complete our review. It does, however, send another message to the commissioners, a message that the board of, uh, commissioners is not funding the board of education at the level that they believe we should be funding. There are two statements I need to address in this message, that, uh, if we don't address, I think could have ongoing problems. The first is, um, in the second paragraph, second sentence, it says, "Although our local per pupil expenditure is low in comparison to neighboring counties," and then it goes on. Obviously, they haven't reviewed Harnett's County per pupil expenditure, which is much lower than ours, about $300 plus more, um, per pupil, per year. Comparing ourselves to neighboring counties is, is a nice thing to do when we're looking at quality of life matters, but to base fiscal policy off such comparisons is very dangerous. Looking at one single financial measure is also dangerous. You need to look at lots of demographic and financial statistics when comparing counties. The school of government, in conjunction with the state treasurer's office, has a tool where you can compare counties financially. Several of us have been through that class, and it's a great tool. Use population, size of budget, services provided, examples of items that you look for, um, maybe ADM numbers, or tax base. I like to use tax base first, because tax base shows our ability to pay for ongoing expenditures. In our region, we have the lowest tax base, and it's not even close. We are the lowliest of low when it comes to tax base. The average tax base for the state is 9.7 billion, and ours is 4.7 billion. The tax bases in our surrounding counties are at least twice our size. So if we, if we try to compare ourselves financially to other counties, it's unfair to our taxpayers. We have to take a look at other counties that have similar ADM, similar tax bases, and similar populations, which there are plenty across the state, and we fare comparably very well to those counties. The second statement that inaccurately summarizes their belief has to do with capital, and that's on the second page, and that is the fourth paragraph.
Page 46 of our packet, if you're following.
Yes, ma'am. I call it a voodoo ratio here, that the superintendent has made up. It should be noted that the county gives the schools two sources of funding, current expense and capital. Since counties began, began funding schools' current expense years and years ago, current expense funds were used for maintenance of schools, all maintenance, painting, roofing, HVAC repairs, everything. Over time, as the state cuts certain programs, boards of education began using funds intended for maintenance. Instead, now they use them for teachers' programs and supplements, just to name a few. Now they're using the capital budget for maintenance. If maintenance is so important, why are they cutting maintenance expenditures in the current expense budget again this year, which they are? Maintenance services being cut and funding, these funds are being transferred to other purposes. It was one of the few things I was able to analyze in what they submitted to us. There's no bigger maintenance project going on right now than Lee Senior High School. Basing, you know, their definition of what maintenance is now, $22.6 million of maintenance expenses is going on at the high school. As a matter of policy, the board of education is trying to move maintenance from current expenses to capital, and saying we aren't providing them enough funds for capital. If they recalculate the ratios using the 22-point million that we're, that we're spending over these two years for Lee Senior, and then add the current expense funds for maintenance, our ratio is extremely high. So, you know, we can pick and choose numbers all we want, and so can they, to try to make a case. School facilities are our responsibility, and what goes on in the classroom is the state's. Since the state continues to cut funding to the board of education, and the board of education doesn't eliminate a corresponding cost, local funds are then used to supplement what is ongoing in the classroom. This is a trend that's been going on for years. This is why, at this point, the board of education is asking for more capital, along with current expense. Now, please remember, every year, our board of education gets very defensive, and says that the current expense... that the current expense funds are spent at their discretion and their discretion only. That's really not legally true. We can allocate their funds by purpose and function, but we have not done so to give the board of education the flexibility they have asked for in balancing their budget. Now, the board of education is beginning to make a case that we're not giving them enough money. I think we need to ask why. Why are we not funding them enough money? Why don't they have enough money? The bottom line is that the Lee County Board of Commissioners is charged with setting the fiscal policy of this county. Over the last several months, the board of education has been trying to influence that policy in many different ways. So, in the end, staff, and I believe the commissioners, needs to preserve the commissioner's right to set fiscal policy for the county and do what is best for the taxpayers. This year's current request, current expense request and capital request by the board of education will require an increase in the local allocation of over $5 million. To fund this request, we'd require an 11-cent tax rate increase. Now, I got, we talked about tax rate increases before in, in capital when we were talking about the CIP, but I'm going to talk about it again right now. Education expenses account for 50%, 57% of the $33 million property tax levy that we levy the county. So, we're covering every other expenditure for the county with 43 cents on the dollar that we get. So, you think about the sheriff, emergency management, senior services, parks and recreation, health department, DSS, I can go on and on and on. We're funding that with 43 cents of a dollar that we tax. County services can no longer be cut at the expense of educational expenditures. And in a couple of weeks, when I show you your budget, my budget, you'll be surprised at the cuts I've had to make to balance this year's budget. We have had a trend since I've been here of cutting expenditures in the county government and turning around and increasing their budget, except for one year, where we cut their budget 4% and cut the county's budget 10%. So, we are placing education first as a priority and always have. Therefore, the only, in my opinion, the only way to fund the board of education request is to raise the property tax rate. So, to get this request that we got from them eight pages and to consider a property tax rate of this magnitude, I mean, how do we do that? We can't do it. So, we have to ask the board of education for additional information and I have prepared that resolution to request for that information and is before you tonight. Now, I could read it again or I could read the whole thing if you wanted me to. Basically, just to summarize it, we state some legal issues here at the beginning. We state North Carolina general statutes and the requirement the board of education has to provide financial information to the county. And then we ask for 14 things, which if the commissioners want to add to those 14 things, 14 items, I would encourage them to do so. The first being is their line item budget, which we did not get. We got a purpose and function summary budget, which is not their entire budget. So, it's not, in our opinion, what we're, what they are required to provide us. I think we also need to look at a year-to-date financial statement. We have not been getting year-to-date financial statements from the board of education. I think it was brought up earlier and it was, it's ironic that it was brought up earlier because I had it right here. We also need to take a look at their statement of fund balance for the last three years. Another thing we can look at is educational policies. What are the educational policies adopted by the Lee County Board of Education? What are the fiscal policies? What are the purchasing policies? We also need to look at the size and composition of the student populations by school and local administrative unit. You might be asking where I got these ideas. It came right out of the school government's guide that Mr. Hoel picked up at one of the meetings he went to. And we go on and on and on. And I do have in there some information we would like to see about the Lee County High School project. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. Obviously, I was, had a lot of time to think about this over the weekend, but as I go back through and I look at the submissions that they've done over the last three years since I've been here, this is the least amount of information by far they have ever provided us. And I just, obviously, there's a message behind it and I think we need to do our due diligence now.
I just want to clarify something that I think you read. Mr. Hoyle, in your opinion, is the budget that the board of education presented to us, does it not meet statutory requirements of what they're required to give us?
They did not comply with the statute, but it says they furnish you with the entire budget and in the format you specify.
Good. And I have a question.
I have a comment. Go ahead, sir.
Commissioner.
Why would it be out of line for chairman of our board to ask the chairman of the school board to present these items to us? Would that be out of line?
I think, under statute, I think what they're trying to do is to force this board to vote. In, in previous actions that the board of education has required, they have asked that any information that a commissioner or staff wants from them has to be approved by the board.
Right.
So, I am, it has to be approved by the board.
Yeah.
You know, so if it's just, we're handing it to the chairman to deliver it without a vote of the board, they're going to say, there wasn't a vote of the board and we're not going to provide it.
Well, my response, Madam Chair.
What else do you get?
To comment is that, that there's nothing wrong if you want to deliver your version or a copy of this board's voted version to the chair of the school board. But the issue at hand is, this is a matter of complying with the law.
Exactly. And I'm personally insulted, as a commissioner, to think that another body who is requesting funding did not give it to us a format that passes statutory requirements. I'm insulted by that.
Madam Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes.
Okay. And I think this is, this is good, this resolution. But I wanted to recommend to y'all to consider the following as we move forward as a team, okay? Number one, excellence in education is tantamount to a very positive economic development for our county. I don't think anybody would deny that. Two, these are our schools, these are our students, and these are our teachers. They don't belong to the board of education, they belong to all of us. And I would, and I know that we will keep that foremost in mind as we proceed. Number three, I think we need to lean over backward to try to understand the crisis that I, that public schools are facing. And I say crisis. And I think that they are at wits' end perhaps, trying to figure out, based on the way the schools have evolved up to this point, how to continue to maintain excellence in the requirements that we place upon them for being at least average state-operating public institutions at the state level of performance, given the, the short funding that they anticipate. Next, I'd say, please let us not position ourselves as adversaries. If they place themselves in that position, that's their problem. But I would urge us to, according to Mr. Hoyle and according to our good conscience, simply be a straight arrow in this process. This resolution, I think, says that we have to do what we have to do, but that we are not, this is not combat that we're entering into. And I think that we need to hold down the rhetoric as best we can, be state's people as best we can in this, and simply do what we have to do, keeping in mind that this is going to be a tough year or two for the schools. So, that's not to say anything other than, let's, let's really try not to get into a match with the board of education if we can possibly do it. I think Mr. Oldham's sense is, expresses my own. I think he's wondering and sensing, can this be managed without a confrontation? If, if they are laying the groundwork for that, we may have to play that game. But until proven otherwise, I, I think that my attitude's going to be, let's just be four-square, move forward, require what we have to have by law, and, and really look hard at the, what we're going to be approving or not approving for the school system and not try to get into an arm wrestle with them on this, but do what we have to do. So, thank you. Just wanted, I think there's a way to go about this and there's a way not to go about it, and I urge us to take the high road here.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
With regards to the comments made by Commissioner Hayes, if this board leans backwards any further, we'll be standing on our heads. This makes no sense. This is not some game that we have time to negotiate and play. This is a very serious matter. The school system is not the only system that needs assistance from this board and taxpayers. You know, this is a time when all boards should come to the table in a serious mode and try and work together. This is a clear example of the insulin that they have toward the board. We won't comply unless you make us comply. My position is, I'm ready to make you comply.
Well, not to be misunderstood, that's exactly my point, Mr. Reeves. I must have said all of that for naught. I'm saying that we have to do what we have to do. But I think the way we do it is important and, and I hope that we will be very civil about it and let them do what they must do. But, you know, let's, let's be, let's work with them. They are our educational partners in this county. They're the only ones we have and I hate to see this taken to a level of, and that's not to, I think I started out by saying, this resolution makes perfect sense. I, I'm very much supportive of this because I know how Mr. Crumpton feels about it and the thought he's put into it on our behalf. But, you know, you can, if you listen carefully, you begin to see sort of an attitude developing here and I think we're better than that.
I'm going to move to approve the resolution, that's first. And in addition to that, let me ask you a question. I, I wasn't present, but I heard at one point there was a budget recommendation of 2.1 and then it moved up the chain to 4, 4 something.
You correct. That's right.
Okay.
It was 2.7.
All right.
Superintendent's recommended budget.
Does that sound like, does that sound like negotiating on behalf of the taxpayers? Yeah, in the wrong direction, in the wrong direction.
Well, I think we have to look at this, like you say, in the budget process, this will all be examined and we will see what is frivolous and what is not. I mean.
And meanwhile, they can read this.
Absolutely.
Before we move forward with, with a motion on this resolution, I would, I would like to caution the board that, that the school board could very well take this resolution and say, this is all we got to give you. It doesn't, doesn't limit it, the questions, but if, if indeed we're playing a game here and the school board says, well, these were the only 14 questions you asked, this is all we have to answer, I want to make sure that this resolution is modified so that it says, and we reserve the right.
Doesn't it say so in the last sentence and to be it further resolved?
Commissioners also reserve the right to ask for additional information as they deem necessary to review the fiscal year 2011-12 requested budget from the board of education.
Okay.
This is like the first round.
So, you're, so you think that this is sufficient for us to then send our laundry list because I don't want, I don't want there to be any mistake.
There's counsel right over there.
Okay. We can then submit further questions because I got a list of about 120 questions right now of things that need to be answered that are not in this resolution.
And they didn't come from us, they came from constituents and.
And I don't want to be, I don't want to be told I got to wait 45 days or 30 days to get it either. Because, I mean, we got a review process, it's getting ready to start and this is very important, we have all that, because by statutory requirement, even if it's not in the resolution, they have to provide us all financial information we need to, to make an appropriation. That's right. And I want to make sure that is well, well understood, that this is not the list of, a complete list of questions.
You know, it's time for this board and probably a lot of other boards in the state of North Carolina to stop, stop taking the position that if I don't support education, then they're not going to vote for me. This is not what it's about. This is about how to survive in really, really serious times. And, and each time we come to the table to talk about budgets, the leading money getter is always the board of education. So, it's not like we go out intentionally and say, we're not going to fund you. That's not what we do. We try and give everybody full consideration, but when you start telling a board, this board in particular, that I'll give you what I want you to have, that's too far. That's going too far.
Well, not only that, but every department that we've had have taken cuts for the last three years that I know of.
The county especially.
That's right. And, and so, we've held salaries at the same level and yet, we see the school board giving raises, we see the school board spending funds that are not necessarily to be spent. It's like we still have pie in the sky. It's not that we don't want to fund education, but just throwing money at education doesn't make, make a person well-educated. In fact, from what I'm talking to businessmen, we are not turning out well-educated people.
The only thing I would.
And so, they need to concentrate on getting that solved, but you don't do it with money. You do it with more quality. And so, it's, it's time to do that, but we already have a vote, you know, a motion on the table, so.
So, is there any further discussion?
I have one other item I wanted to just reemphasize is because, because I don't want there to be any mistake for folks that may be watching this online or live. The, it has not been discussed at any stage of this game that I'm aware of by the board of commissioners or by anyone else to be cutting the level of funding, yet anyway, that we gave the school system or that we, that we passed on to the taxpayers in the last several years. We haven't voted to decrease that in any way, shape, or form at this point. And that, and that, that what in effect has, is occurring here, or at least appears, is a request for an increase of upwards of 4 to 5 million dollars in operations funding alone.
4.1.
4.1 million in operations for this year alone to make whole the cuts that came down from the federal and the state government. Is that correct?
But how do they know what those are? If you, if you haven't thrown in your federal and state numbers yet, if they don't have their budget done, how do they know what they're short here? I don't understand that part of it.
Well, that would probably be part of the argument why they don't have a line item budget.
Right.
But we don't know what the state's going to fund us either. But you have to make estimates based on what you know's coming down the line.
These are projections, right.
And, you know, we go into it every year, knowing that by June 30th, the state could make a big change. Now, in the budget message, it doesn't say they're looking to be made whole from the state, state cuts. It says that they're looking at a reduction of revenue of 6.4 million. So, and that's, I guess what they're asking for is, is 4.1 of the 6.4, where they would have to cut 2.1 million.
And I guess, to go back to my point was, I want to make sure that everyone understands that no one on this board of commissioners yet has, has, has had the opportunity to review the budget in detail, to evaluate the operations, the debt service, and the capital funding, all of which are borne by our taxpayers. I mean, all of those are, are components to the tax bill that's get, gets sent out every year. So, this, we're not just looking at operations funding, but also capital and debt service. All of that is what the taxpayers have to pay for and that, and that, as I go back and look at the last seven years, we have, we have increased every year that total burden to our taxpayers and we haven't talked about going backwards on that. I mean, we're still looking at the same level, which is 39 or 40% of our total budget to K-12 education. I, you know, people need to understand that this is not what we're suggesting to cut education. We're trying to figure out, how do we salvage the best educational opportunity we have for a sound public education in this county, leading into this budget cycle where revenues are, are very starved. So, you know, just please don't.
We're in a different boat.
Well, we're in worse boat.
That's right.
We're in a worse boat because we have to produce and.
Madam Chairman, I call a question.
Okay. So, motion has been made.
We're not in a different boat.
Well, we're in worse boat.
That's right.
We're in a worse boat, 'cause we have to produce and fund.
Madam Chair, would I call the question?
Okay. So, motion has been made to approve the resolution. John can, I know I had three or four things I wanted to add to it. Commissioner Womack's got some things. Can we just get those two? Is the board comfortable with any of you who have any questions you want asked? Get them to the county manager, and we'll get those submitted. John is, are you-
That's fine.
Okay. I had just one question, oh, one, oh, well, let's take a vote first. All those in favor of the motion approving the manager's resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. John, one question. On page 47, in your opinion, I know you've spent some time here, how many of these purpose codes are statually, statutorily required of counties to fund? 'Cause these look a little off walls, me.
Well, that's, that's what's difficult to do. Unless you have the, the line item budget, you don't know what, within the, the purpose and function, they're actually spending on those eight items, that the statute says we have to pay for. The only one you can really go down to and take a look at is maintenance services, which is, starts with 658X. And, you know, know that that's probably all of our expenditure. We say that, but we're not sure until you take a look at the line item budget. The other thing, you know, we probably need to go ahead and discuss with, with budget is, I plan on presenting on the 23rd, hopefully I'll have a line item budget by the Board of Education before. I have to finalize, finalize this on about the 16th or 17th. I plan on presenting the budget to you all. That's a 6 o'clock meeting. I don't know if you're gonna wanna meet earlier. You know, last year, we did a budget workshop at 3, where I actually, we actually had time to have a question and answer session about the budget, before the, the actual 6 o'clock meeting. So, you know, I wanted to throw that out there as, you know, giving us some additional time, since the schedule has gotten pushed back almost three weeks, because of the, you know, the fact that I thought we were giving them more time. But, and actually, we do need to give them more time, 'cause they need more time to produce the, the line item budget to us, but-
Doesn't their Board of Education have to have their line item budget done by May 15th and available for public scrutiny? I mean, not just our-
That's the way we read the, the statute.
Okay, so, May 15th, and-
So on the 16th and Monday, when I come into work, if it's not there, I'm doing a budget without it.
Okay.
I mean, you know, present it to you, and then the, the-
Because it's probably your plan to get that budget out to us, and with our agenda packet on the Wednesday before the 23rd, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, we just send the sheriff down there to go get it.
I'm sure he would do it, if we asked him to do it.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm just suggesting that we, you know, so that we're not here a long period into the night on the 23rd, that maybe we can have a preliminary discussion at, at 3, present the budget, have-
Who's to approve the request?
Have Lisa there, and, and we'll go through it.
What, what do you, what do you make a motion on, Robert?
That we come in at 3 o'clock, and go through whatever questions and answers we need to provide.
On the 23rd?
Yes, on the 23rd at 3 o'clock, and then we do the formal, formal budget presentation to the public at 6.
And at the request of one husband, we won't be here until 9 or 10.
So, let me ask this question. Mr. Crumpton, so we'll have the 3 o'clock preview, and then you will visually present the budget, which is sort of the public presentation of it.
Yes.
And then what comes after that? Remind me again how this will flow.
The board needs to decide, you know, if they wanna have workshops, or, you know, how they wanna go through the budget. We have Janu-, or January, June 6th scheduled for the public hearing on the budget. We would do our normal meeting at 3, and then at 6 o'clock, we would have the public hearing on the budget. Just based on the interest this year, I'm recommending that we leave here and go to courtroom 4 in the old courthouse, and hold the public hearing there, 'cause obviously we couldn't put everybody in this room that I think's gonna show up for the hearing. So, I don't think we've had that much interest in a while in our budget.
I would like to have a budget work session prior to the 6th, because, you know, I've been on this board for four years now, and there's still questions I have about the budget, and we've got several new ones. So, I would like to have us have at least one budget work session open to the public, because I, I sense there's a lot of engagement with taxpayers and citizens this year in this whole process, not just with the Board of Education budget, but with everything.
Madam Chair, I would also offer that, that I, I have already built a proposed schedule, and I would ask that you consider that, that, that proposed schedule, 'cause I've got enough questions and enough probing interest in each of the departments to take about 13 or 14 sessions of about two hours each, and-
You need to get a private session.
Well, I don't want private sessions, 'cause I want these to be public.
I might come out with me-
No, you, I'm not suggesting all the commissioners should have to. I mean, some of us that are fairly new on the board have a lot of probing questions that we wanna ask. I know Mr. Parks feels the same way about, about diving into some of these budgets. I would like to understand better, particularly Department of Health and Social Services, both of those departments. I'd like to know a lot more about what, what their program requirements are, their statutory requirements, and get through these to satisfy myself that, that we're making prudent decisions.
Commissioner Womack, they're, they're complying with our request for budget advice. Take your two weeks or your 17, whatever, to the school board.
Well, they're in there too, they're in there too.
Get them first.
So would you all agree that you'd be open to a budget work session anywhere from June 1st, which is Wednesday, or Thursday, the 2nd, prior to our, you know, first public hearing on the 6th?
He had already scheduled, he had already proposed that we do one at 3 o'clock, I think on June the 1st, right? You'd already proposed it, had you not?
We had one on June.
Right, they had, so they already had it.
So that is a go then, okay.
What time?
3:00 PM on Wednesday, June 1st.
June 1st, right.
And I think, because of the interest in some of those other departments, and I haven't done this with this board, but I did do it with the Scotland County Board, bought, brought the key department heads, the sheriff, DSS, and the health department, the three largest budgets that we had internally, and allowed them to go through their budgets with the board. I'll probably have them at that meeting on the 1st, just, so they, I think most of them would relish the opportunity, especially after some of the cuts I've made, to plead their case to you. So it might actually go in the opposite direction, you know, we're looking for additional cuts. They're gonna, they might plead their case for additional, additional funding, so, it could be, it could be interesting.
I think it's prudent for them to come in and, and suggest what they, what their recommended budget was to you, and then what your adjustments were, so we can validate that. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, that, that we understand what they felt like they needed to have, and what you, what adjustments you already made.
John, I have a technical question on this resolution that we just passed. How can Jim, Charlie, and I, and any other commissioner who has some questions, get that included on this particular one before? I, I just need to-
Well, if you'll just send it to me in a Word document, I can add it.
Yeah, I, I wanted to change the motion before we voted to, to include any amendments as a part of the passing of the resolution.
Oh, I thought that, I thought that was understood.
All right. Mr. Womack?
Reasoning by here.
Okay. Are we finished with that part of the, okay, ready to move on to new business, B, report on business plan from economic-
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't complete it with the, did we have, did you have your motion, right? And you got that voted?
I don't, I don't know.
We voted his motion.
What you got?
I have one other item that is very unpopular, and I wanted to throw it out there and, and get it on the record. Two meetings ago, and then again, last meeting, we had a discussion about an independent citizens' review panel. Chairman Hayes had given back an email, distributed to all of us, that, that I read, took great interest in. I, since, subsequent to that email, drafted a, a justification memo that I also circulated with all the commissioners. I sent that around by email, I know that's in your packet today, GNL made available. And, and Madam Chair, even though I recognize that there is opposition to this citizens' review panel, I wish to, to just state that, that I think that it's, it's a, it's a participative democracy in this county. I think that we should, we should have open and transparent budget review process, and I, and I highly suggest that we include the public in an organized and deliberate fashion to do a, a budget review this year as part of any workshops or panels that we might, or sessions we might have with the departments. And that, and that I would move to approve the, the, I would make the motion that we approve the citizens' review panel as part of, as, as I proposed two meetings ago, and have updated in this particular document, recognizing that it may not get a positive, an up or down vote, or a positive vote today.
Okay, so, motion has been made to approve Commissioner Womack's proposal for this Board of Commissioners to set up a citizens' panel.
Since I was one that sort of initiated this proposal, essentially, my whole idea of this proposal was, is we, we had viewed where other counties had used this successfully in helping pare down their budget and getting community support in the budget. It was not to give away any responsibility, not to give away any authority, but just have an extra set of eyes that would overlook, and through that, see the process that we use, so that they will be more comfortable with what we're doing. 'Cause we've had a lot of rhetoric come in, and on our emails and phone calls, about the fact that, you know, they're not comfortable with any elected official now. The idea was, is to, you know, help a group of people that could go back out to the public and say, okay, the process looks good, or make suggestions that it's not good. Not get involved in the process itself, but to make suggestions that we come back to the process and say, you know, we recommend this. Not to get in the way with time, we don't wanna, you know, add any more time to it, but to give us some more consideration if necessary, or they might come back and say, you know, the process is working, you know, we don't need to do any, make suggestions. So, that's, that's my original intent. I, I know Chairman Hayes sent me this e-
Chairman?
Or, Mr. Hayes, I'm sorry.
I got it.
Sent this, sent this email, and, and it was totally out of whack with what I had originally had the concept of, is that we have an extra set of eyes that would just be watching the process. Give them a copy of it, let them watch along, you know, as we're discussing it. If they wanna give us some feedback, then they could provide us some feedback. And we'd go over the whole demographics of, you know, we could have selections from the whole demographics of, of our whole county. And Commissioner Womack chose to go ahead and put it into a sort of a process, which I didn't, you know, do that. So, anyway, that's, that was my concept behind it.
Commissioner Hayes?
Okay. First of all, I, I think that Mr. Parks's intentions are good and worthy, in wanting the public to be fully aware of the budget process. My point was that I think that it's probably unnecessary because of the very fact that we're going to be inviting people to come to, to public hearings, to our workshops, to see what we're doing. There's certainly nothing to be, to be hidden in this process. I think that at this late date, that to try to codify a group of people, as I said in my piece to you, with all due respect, that I think that it could sow seeds for possible delay, confusion, misunderstanding. It could even bring sort of a political pro and con into it. If we're not careful, things tend to get that way. I, I just feel like that we are duly elected to take on this, the biggest thing that we have to do every year is pass the budget. I think that comes with the territory. I think it was understood by the people who elected us that we have this responsibility, have had it through the decades. And, so I think that we have to be four-square in addressing the budget and making those tough decisions. I think that, again, I've talked with many people about the budget, as I'm sure you people have, and they are most welcome to be a part of this process. But I think it's, it sort of, it's late in the day, it's slightly bureaucratic, it requires the staff, I think, to help us organize and weed through, and I think it will be more complicating than simplifying, and it's gonna be difficult enough as it is. So, with all respect to your notion, and your idea, and to Mr. Womack, who puts always a lot of energy into expressing himself, both written and verbal, I would urge that we not approve this, and move on, and do what we're voted in to do, and as I think we've said ourselves, to invite the public into these open sessions, and I believe we will not come up one iota short on the type of input that will be useful to us, for finally, we have to go into our own minds and hearts when we come up on the decisions that we're gonna have to about this budget. And with, and speaking among ourselves, we've got to really be a team like we never have before, since so much is at stake, so much is at risk in, in public education, and other areas, but of course, that goes without saying. So that's my, my spiel, and I, I'm not gonna read this thing, but I think that, that expresses myself. I just don't think it's necessary at this time, though it's, it's not a bad notion, and I would, I would urge that we not approve this special committee being organized at this time.
Okay, and I, I just wanna add one thing here to explain why I'm gonna vote the way I am. I love the concept of the citizens' group. I would encourage them to self-form. My only problem here is, it still is an appointed council, and I've just seen politics get involved with just EDC board appointments and others, and I know you've given a lot of time to the process, but that's my only hang-up. I wanna see the citizens' group form itself without being appointed by us, so-
Let me, before we vote the question, let me ask one other, one other question.
Madam Chair, call for the question.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as made by Commissioner Womack, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails, 5 to 2. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Hughes, I think we'd asked you to report on, update on what the EDC is doing to maybe help some of displaced businesses from the tornado.
Sure. Thank you for letting me come here and talk to you a little bit about that. I'll just read some things I've put together here, and certainly be glad to send that to all of you, if, if you're interested in it. At least 50 businesses, which, two were manufacturers, were significantly damaged in the storm of Spansett. Company with 42 employees on Industrial Drive, and then Static Control, company with about 1,000 employees, also on Industrial Drive and Lee Avenue, were the two manufacturers that were most damaged. We helped them through a process starting on Monday, helping them look for different spaces that they could work in temporarily, at least up to a year, so that they could start the process of rebuilding their facilities. We worked with them until Spansett located in a 20,000 square foot building on William Street, and then Static Control located in a 278,000 square foot former Hansbrenn building on Darrell Street. I also had discussions that day on Monday with the Director of Real Estate for Lowe's, as he was possibly looking for an interim solution. It looked like for a while he was gonna go to McDonald's Brothers on Wilson Road. Apparently that's not the case, and, and right now, it looks like they're not going to open up a retail outlet until, and just really focus on rebuilding. I have heard that they are, and this came from Bob Joyce, that they are putting a contract- I have heard that they are, and this came from Bob Joyce, that they are putting a contractor's facility or a place for them to be able to have contractors come in and order their supplies that they need for rebuilding. They will have that in the county, so we'll still have that service available. All of this was discussed at the EDC board meeting down here. One of my board members suggested that we send a resolution recognizing the company's plight, all the company's plight, and offered to provide assistance where we could. Jim Omack, another board member, thought we should reach out to all the businesses, including the retail side sector. The board decided to have me send a letter to the affected businesses, which we did today. Now, the good news is that Spansett said they will rebuild on its site, as will Static Control, basically using some of the same platforms of those buildings that were blown down. And we're on, Lowe's will do the same, it is in the process of rebuilding already, and they have provided some plans, I think, to the inspections office for them to begin The obvious retail business for Lowe's will be picked up by the Apex, carry and favorable stores here nearby.
Pittsburgh, a lot of folks there.
Oh, Pittsburgh, that's right, that's right, that's true. We received a list of businesses impacted by the tornadoes from GIS. Last week, and like I said, we sent them a letter. I've had an appointment with Ken Gay of FEMA, of the private sector, I think John mentioned that at the last meeting, he's probably met with him, to discuss what assistance would be provided to the businesses. At that meeting, I invited Static and Spansett to join us. Static was there, and Spansett couldn't make it. Graham Bingham from FEMA was there, as well as Bob Joyce. So we talked a little bit about the process of rebuilding here. The mission, their mission at this stage, and you've heard this plenty of times already from Shane and others, is to make sure enough information is out there to encourage anyone, individuals or businesses impacted by the storms, to register either by phone or in person at the disaster assistance center. That registration allows FEMA to send information about the programs that will be available to individuals and businesses. We heard that day, and Graham was here earlier, that businesses actually will not be eligible for any grants, however, they may be eligible for low interest financing to help rebuild their businesses. But register first and information will be available. We have agreed to assist FEMA, particularly on the private sector, and with contact information through our mailing list for manufacturers, for both the HR directors and plant managers. FEMA would like to have the company, the companies' help in providing all FEMA information to their employees, to the company's employees. And so for the next 50 days, we'll be figuring out a way to help them disseminate information for FEMA. The Chamber will do the same thing for their customers. And we'll let Bob talk to you about their activities. There've been quite a few communications coming from emergency management at the county and the Chamber regarding websites, assistance, and so on. All those communications were forwarded, that were forwarded to us, were forwarded to our mailing list. I've encouraged a few of the builders that are actually beginning to help some of the businesses sit down with planning and inspections as soon as building plans are developed, in order to make sure everyone is in agreement about the information that's needed, planning and inspections, the format, and how soon everything needs to be completed, or the timeframe. This seems to avoid some of the hiccups that you have due to lack of communications. Planning and inspections from day one was poised and ready to take on the responsibility of moving through the approval processes as quickly as possible. That's what all businesses, I don't care if small or large, are going to be interested in, as well as, as homeowners. And we will continue to work with the different agencies like FEMA, SBA, and others to find out about any programs that could be made available to businesses impacted by a storm. This has obviously been an unbelievable disaster that this community will feel for many years to come. But there's a lot of help out there that, that I think is yet to come, as these agencies work through the information that's provided to them by those individuals and businesses affected. There'll be a meeting soon at the Civic Center that will include the SBA and SBTDC. I know the Department of Commerce is involved with that, and we've had some discussions with the Department of Commerce, and they were actually down last weekend, looking at some of the trauma that's taken place here. At our meeting last Friday with Ken Gay and Graham Bingham, he also mentioned, and I think you have seen this information before, but many persons have been dislocated as a result of the storm, in other words, not employed anymore, which, which has not really happened with our businesses, the manufacturers. They have continued to employ people to clean up and setting up the new operations. But there are some numbers that anyone, businesses or, or individuals that are dislocated because of the storms can go to, and they're, they're going to get some special help through the Employment Security Commission. So, with that, we'll leave it up to any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Hayes?
A business like Lowe's Home Improvement, I assume that, and they might be typical of any other manufacturers, or small, even middle-sized businesses that may have been damaged, they are pretty well, is this your opinion, that they are covered both by insurance and any type of other state or federal support, to the point that, and they've said they're going to rebuild and rebuild rapidly. I'm wondering if you have any indication that, well, number one, that they will recover fully financially from their loss, and number two, will they likely expand? Is there that opportunity, so that there's a silver lining, if you can find one, behind this disaster? Do you think that businesses, any of them that you've talked with, are apt to say, business is very good in Lee County, and we are going to take this, this tragedy and rebuild and rebuild beyond that point? Not to put words in your mouth.
Sure. As I understand it, in terms of the Lowe's facility, the plans that have been submitted so far to inspections, and I got this information from Bob Bridwell, that they're basically looking at the same footprint. The configuration inside the building may be a little bit different, maybe a little bit more modern, more up-to-date, but that the footprint itself is about the same, and basically they're going to use the same pad, which is to be expected. But it'll probably be more of a, a more efficient operation-
Up-to-date.
-once they finish the new, the new renovations. With, with the other manufacturers, the two manufacturers, those are 70s vintage buildings. So, the building that Static Control was using for a DC was not built for a DC. The addition they put on that facility was for a DC, so it really lacked some of the things that distribution facilities would have. So I expect that in the new configuration, you'll see more of a focus on the most modern, up-to-date, and it was, the addition was as up-to-date as, as it could be when they actually did that about five, six years ago. But now the entire building will be included in that, in that whole process, so I expect that. I really haven't heard much about Spansett, other than they'll probably go back to their footprint, but I guarantee you that the inside of the building will look much more modern and much more up-to-date, with offices and telecommunications and processes that, that will help them further. So I think that is the silver lining, I really do.
Thank you.
The other question that you have had to do with insurance, whether or not they're recovered, I feel like, for the most part, the three that we currently have mentioned, for the most part are going, insurance is going to handle most everything, the disruption of business, the property damages and so on, inventory. Don't know about all the other ones out there. You've got a lot of small businesses, retailers, that may not have had the same luxury of being able to buy the insurance that they needed to buy to cover all the losses that they might have. But I think that in this process with FEMA, FEMA and the other agencies, one of the things that they'll be asked to do quickly is to fill out an application with SBA. And in that, in that application process, they're going to ask questions about how far did insurance help you in terms of getting you to the place you need to be? And then any gaps is where, where maybe the SBA command comes in and actually does a low-interest loan of some kind.
And one other little quickie, just a tagline. The contracts that they have, did I understand that they are trying to, through other facilities, honor those? That is with people who might be builders or in, who were doing business with them here, they would not be out anything? They would get those supplies from these other areas? And it'd be somewhat seamless, troublesome, but still, they, they-
Right.
They're doing business in Lee County now.
That's right. And there's probably going to be a little bit more of a drive time for these other facilities to, but, but it's going to be handled.
Okay.
And these contractors will have the same service available to them that they've had in the past.
Thank you.
On a different subject, maybe Bob Bridwell needs answers, but what's going on out at Lake Tramway? I see dirt being moved out there in a couple places.
Are you talking about behind the pottery?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob is probably a better person to answer that question, but there is some, there is some activity on land purchases and land development back there. I'm not sure of everything that's included in that, but it may have a new look here in the, in the near future.
I have one, one question that I wanted to ask. The, I think the reason we asked for the EDC to come present today was so that we could identify specifically what, what members of the county staff were doing to reach out to business. And you're the closest thing we have to county staff that's in that role and that, in that, in the business of commerce and, and economic growth and development, and so I think that's why we had asked that you come forward. All of this was very helpful. I guess I still sense a gap in the county's outreach, or the city's outreach, back to businessmen in the community. You fairly clearly identified that there were two or three businesses affected by the tornado that were in your lane, so to speak, that were manufacturers and therefore organizations or companies that you would follow closely. I guess I'm worried about the other 47, and, and what perceptions they might have that the county really cares about them, that they are, that, that their needs locally are not just being handed off to FEMA-
Sure.
...and the Small Business Administration, and they're left to fend for themselves if there are regulatory things, or inspection things, or, or other tasks and functions that the county has oversight over that we could do to streamline the process of recovery, so they can, so, because I guarantee you, there are people that got laid off from work that lost their jobs as a result of the tornado, and there, and there are businesses that will struggle to get back on their feet. And, and I would like to have some visibility personally about, as a commissioner, to know just what, what struggles they are having, and, you know, short of me having to go do an inventory of 47 businesses, and having to go out and, and we'll go meet some of them, I'm just curious, what are we doing as a county, the EDC, or perhaps in coordination with the Chamber, to reach out to those other 47 businesses that may be struggling to get back on their feet?
And then clearly-
Yeah, I met with Bob Joyce last week on that matter, and I know that Bob's, you know, out there on foot traffic, and I told him if there was anything the county could do, when he's out there trying to, to gather that information from the retail perspective, to give us a call. But, you know, the Chamber and the EDC, I think, are trying to work together on, on that type of response and, and anything that we can do. I'm not sure, besides trying to get people headed in the right direction to get the assistance, I'm not sure how much we actually can do. I do know that, talking with Bob Bridwell today, they're, you know, the permitting process is, is going quickly. You know, we've, we've made some changes in, in the permitting process to expedite the permits. So they're trying to, if you bring a house plan in today, they're trying to get you a permit within 24 hours, where normally it might take a week. So they have some extra inspectors from other counties that are assisting in plan review to try to get that done. And then, you know, we've waived a couple of processes on the environmental side, whereas if the building inspector can go out and take a look at a site and see that, you know, there's no damage, or there hasn't been anything going on around a subject tank system out, out in the county, then we won't, you know, charge the $300 to go inspect one. So they've worked together on that, have worked out a plan that both environmental health and the building inspections feel comfortable with. And of course, they're working really closely with Progress Energy on electrical permits. You know, these houses that were really damaged before they can get electrical power back to the houses have to have an inspection, and, you know, they're doing those inspections pretty much immediately when, if someone calls or comes by the office. So, but they've done 29 of those in the last seven days, so hate to say it's good for revenue, but it has been good for revenue in the building inspections department, what's going on. But also, they're, they're doing a bang-up job of getting these permits out and getting people out there, so.
Is there any local agency keeping track of the numerous business contractors coming in for these projects? Or do you know that?
Well, that was actually-
You want to keep a record.
That was actually-
The permit itself, when somebody gets a permit, do you have to put who your contractor is?
We actually had some folks ask the Chamber to certify contractors who were coming into town, and-
You would think we'd have a listing of every one of these damaged properties and who was working on it, and a copy of their license, just for the wreck, and it ought to be maintained. But, but let me ask you-
We are trying, we are trying to do that. They have-
They might do that, but what I'm asking is, if any member of the board wants to get that information or know who has it, who do we go to?
It's on, it's on the building permit application.
You mean as far as going to building inspections and requesting that information? Contractors are coming to town?
If there was any activity in St. Andrews, for example, I've, the damage during the tornado, I'd want to know every house that was permitted and who their contractor is for that location. Because we then get a look at how many the contractor is obligating himself to or herself to, and gives us another view to look at.
Well, emergency management's got the database for, for all the damaged homes, and I know it's been shared-
And actually GIS has that, and he's, he gave it to me on Friday, so-
I know that's been shared with GIS, so I will check with-
And we don't have any contract-
No, we don't have, there's not, it's not been expanded out to include the names of the, of the work. They've just done a, a generalized assessment of the damage, whether it's destroyed or major damage, but, and the name of the owner, but it doesn't identify in their contractors or anybody.
If it's in the contract, that would help the Sheriff's Department. We got a license, an outline, which then doesn't matter. You've got something to work with. But let me ask you what-
I think we can do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that information's there.
I think we can tie it up, yeah.
Yeah, you can, because, I mean, they have, if they're licensed, they've got the number.
They do, yeah.
What, what exactly has the EDC done, and this is a follow-up to Commissioner Womack's question about the small businesses? I understand that that's not your primary role, but it would seem to me that first and foremost, that we would have a list of all those small businesses that have been impacted, or at least provided a PSA or something along those lines to let them know they're in touch with us. You know, sometimes these folks have some weird financing on their businesses, and you might think they may not want a loan, but when you look, compare what they had to what they might be able to get, they may find some interest in, in small business loans.
Let me, we've never made the distinction between small and large business, okay? But, but I think we do make a distinction between retail and, and the manufacturing side, and we, now, we've always been consistent about that.
But the incentives makes a distinction between small and large. Incentives do.
Incentives do not, only, only, well, we can talk about that later, that's not important. I see what you're asking.
Five hundred more.
You know, we have a list, we have that list that was provided to us by GIS. We're, we're reaching out through our letter, saying, if you have any questions, call us, if there's any way we can help. We're going to be on the lookout for opportunities for you, and that's, that's that entire list of 50 or so businesses that are here. So that includes the manufacturers that I talked about, and also any small business that was out there, including, including the, the couple of farms that were significantly damaged.
The farms, I saw one guy in the paper who was a plumber and had some damage.
I saw that too, yeah.
So, how, how, as a board member, how do I get a copy of that list? So I'm, what I'm walking into?
Well, I'm using the same list that, that GIS has, and I guess was put together by Shane. That's the list that I'm using.
I can get that, too. I'll get it to all the board members.
I have a question. We can talk about the differentiation between manufacturing and retail. What differentiates what we as a county do as far as economic development is to separate those out? Is it by the grants that are offered or not offered for retail, or is it just your idea that it's, that's not what we want to cut?
It's not my idea.
Oh, you're one of the one, it's for you, so you want the difference.
No, it is the difference between a primary job and a secondary job, and those primary jobs in manufacturing, for instance, or mining, or in agriculture, create those, those new dollars in a community. The, the retailers that are out here, McDonald's is not going to come to Sanford, or is not going to locate on a certain corner unless they know they can make money. Target has been talking- Target has been talked about for a long time. Why aren't you recruiting Target? Target will be here when the demographics are correct for them to be here. So that's the difference between...
But when we're talking about people hurting as well as disasters, so it's retaining jobs by retaining the business.
No question.
Okay, so like tractor supply and a bunch of these others that are there.
They're on that list to get communications from us as well.
That's what I need, thank you.
Would you understand the difference between a primary and a secondary job? May I do that?
Have you heard any rumors or had any discussion with Home Depots coming to Lee County?
No, sir.
Would you like for us to start that round?
I think he just did.
We do hear, we do hear...
I didn't know how passionately I felt about Lowe's until it was gone. I really miss it.
No, I heard names, different names all the time, and honestly, they will come when the time is right. It's not anything that this community can drive, and I truly believe that.
I know they've cleared out a lot of those buildings, that little strip mall out there at the Tramway crossings, and the only thing that's left within the inner is a little pottery thing, but all those other businesses, they've cleaned out, so evidently that's going to get raised for something. Is that where the CVS store is going?
I believe so. Something similar.
The Bob...
Bob doesn't reveal, this Bob doesn't reveal secrets, the other one does. We have to get him in here so this one doesn't get put on the spot.
That's right, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consider a pet foster care agreement. John?
I've spent a lot of time on pet care with the tornado, with dealing with CARA and some issues. And we have a long list of items that we need to address in case that we have another disaster with our pet population. But one of the things that we can do immediately is, and to ease some of the population problems we have in our shelter from time to time, is to go ahead and approve a pet foster care agreement, where we allow folks to house pets until owners can be found. And also, we don't have a volunteer liability waiver, and we have a constant flow of people who would like to volunteer in our shelter. And maybe help answer the phones, clean out the cages, walk the dogs, do whatever. So, you know, these were a couple of things that came up in our discussions with CARA and had Mr. Talbert draft these agreements. These were pretty much canned agreements that we were able to find. He changed some wording to protect the innocent, and we would like to have them approved.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, true.
One is, is how long will we be holding these pets before we put them into foster care?
Right now, we've been asked to hold them for 14 days.
14?
If it's not a surrender. So let's say we pick up an animal that we found, the quarantine period, as recommended by NC State, was extended out to 14 days. So, you know, that could, you know, cause some population problems in the shelter, but, you know, these aren't your, you know, just your average stray. These are dogs that obviously probably were raised by a family, you know, they're domesticated. And, you know, that somebody, if the owner doesn't come get them, at some point, they would be adopted in the future.
Okay, second question is, is, all right, so an owner comes in, let's say maybe he was on vacation for two weeks or something, and he comes in and says, "I'm missing my pet." So we'd have a record so that they could reclaim their pet?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Is it up to 60 days? Or there's a time there if they don't show that, then the...
After the 60 days, they can either turn it back to us and we can adopt the pet out, or the foster family may decide to keep it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the foster care and contingent adoption agreement? There's just one agreement that we're, there are two agreements? And the assumption of risk and waiver, like those two forms?
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. And lottery application that came to us late.
Yes, ma'am, actually, it came to us right after the first meeting in June, in, pardon, I mean, first meeting in April, excuse me. Getting ahead of myself again. But I'm not an HVAC engineer, and I don't claim to be one, so I don't know why you replace a chiller with an air-cooled chiller, especially at a place where they're asking for CIP money in the future, but anyway.
Can we send that through Russell, by any chance?
I don't think we gave it to him.
The project, you've already approved money one time for the project, these are additional funds.
Why are additional funds needed?
I guess it cost them more than they had originally planned for the project.
Additional funds for ongoing projects.
I would ask that Russell take a look at this before we make decisions, unless we don't have a choice.
I didn't, I'm not an AC, HVAC person either, but I couldn't understand if they're taking, cooling towers aren't good enough, why are they going to take them into Tarian or Melmentry?
I don't, I don't...
Okay.
It's also, it's also my understanding that there is a difference, a delta in the energy efficiency of an air-cooled versus a centrifugal chillers, and it would be really good to have somebody who really knows his way around these air conditioning systems to pass some judgment on that.
Motion has been made to refer this to Russell Spivey.
Operations, Director of Operations.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes. And managers report.
I just have one item after I've had all these other items. For those who don't know, the House will be scheduled tomorrow to vote on their budget at 9:00 AM. As reported last week by the Association of County Commissioners, the House budget proposal shifts some county school construction lottery funds to university scholarships. Instead of the $170 million due counties for school capital needs, the House appropriates only 55.2 million, or a loss to counties of $115 million. Lee County's impact will be a loss of a little over a million, $1,026,828. So based on what we normally get, that's leaves about $370,000. Yeah, right around $350,000, $350,000 for lottery.
So...
The Association is asking us, yeah, the Association is asking us to contact our House member tonight and express our concerns at the loss of the lottery money.
Word educational, but it's a joke.
Anyway, we use lottery funds extensively for capital maintenance of schools.
So they're taking them from us and giving them for university scholarships?
That's what it says.
Want to balance their budget?
All the same.
Yeah, well, they have to use lottery money for education, so if they can probably, if they're using general fund money for scholarships, they can take the general fund money, you know, it's the old switcheroo, so...
I will follow up on that tonight, if anybody else is interested.
Well, we thank you. That's all for me tonight.
Okay, commissioners' comments. Mr. Pascal? Mr. Hayes? Mr. Parks?
Just remind everybody that the 23rd, the Youth Council will be here. I should have listed names after their meeting next week, and then we'll brief them on what we want them to do. They look forward to doing that.
Wanted to say that there's a lot of people had closure with the disposal of some of the lot.
I saw that Twitter come through last night, and I didn't sleep. Jim?
One other point I wanted to make that I didn't get a chance to earlier about the citizens panel, I would hope that the board would be amenable to allowing, since it didn't pass as a resolution, or as a motion, that we would allow citizens to at least ask questions or submit questions of the departments as they have them. I think that would restore some confidence in our process and in our transparency to allow them to ask questions and get answers to those questions about the budget.
Mr. Reeves?
Well, I want to comment on that one. It would be very helpful if they said in advance what areas they like to cover, you know, since you kind of all your staff or... Yes, manager, first, I'd like to let Lowe's know, I really miss you. I really do. But secondly, I'd like to get a report on, and the manager has already established a relationship with the Housing Authority project, they're looking at a $2 million grant to build over here at the campus. And I'd like to see where they are, and if there's anything the board can be helped with that alone, that would go and be in line with the need for more buildings on the Dallas level. The second one is, has anyone heard or any movement on this Steve Stroud project out on, what's that, Coleman?
Steve Stroud project out on Coleman Road. We've met with Steve a couple times, mainly on his property got rezoned, and he got a new tax bill. So, the property got rezoned, you know, he came before us for a rezoning, and gave him the rezoning, and then he got a tax bill for the rezoning. So, we've met with him, and I've met with him twice. I know Dwayne Staff's met with him, he's been before the Board of Equalization and Review. He has not had any prospects that he has brought to us. I mean, I'm sure he's talked to a bunch of people, but no prospects yet, and has not started any construction, moving dirt or anything like that out there.
Are we going to find out what the tax increase was, or is that before the Board of Equalization?
It's before the Board of Equalization Review. And I don't think they've sent him his letter yet. They have not sent his letter yet, too.
Have they made a decision already?
They, the board has to meet again this Wednesday, we received two more appeals, so they are still in the process of deciding them all. I guess there's still time to make another vote, and hear other testimony on that. But they'll decide shortly.
Ask them to run it and ride away.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I have just a couple of things. I received a resolution request from Frontier Spinning Mills, and this came in Friday, it was addressed to me, so I'm going to give this to you, Gayle, and ask you to make a copy of this and give it to everybody, so that we can discuss it at our next meeting. How many of you are planning to go to the small business banquet Thursday? I think it says Thursday, is that right, Margaret? They need a count. Jim is, Doc, or you?
Thursday.
Charlie?
I'm going to need a transcript.
Richard? I will be out of town, so so far, Margaret, just one. And I hate that I'm going to miss it, because that's one of my favorite items. Also, just want to remind my colleagues that a week from tonight, the North Carolina Cooperative Extension has this report to its people out at the McSwain Center, and that's at 5:30. So I'd encourage you to come there, it's always impressive to hear how much volunteers add, that's always the part I remember from this. And John, just one quick question. In our additional items of interest, there was an April 20th memo from the Department of Revenue in reference to 2011 sales assessment ratio studies. This came over my head, is this anything we need to be concerned with, or was in the additional items of interest? We went from Lee County...
That's a Dwayne question.
We went from a median ratio of real property of $96.20 to a Department of Revenue's weighted ratio of 97.16. I don't know what that means.
Was that for the calendar year of last year?
Well, it says year of reval was 2007. That's all, it just has a line item for each of the...
This was a calculation that's updated beyond that. This is last year's, this is last year's calculations, and they just identified when our last reval.
Here.
Right. We got to do this quarterly, and after the Department of Revenue gets all the counties for every quarter, they compile that on an annual basis, do a weighted average for each quarter. So we're looking at, this sales ratio study is, it's what I presented to you at the January meeting, we're talking about revaluation. It's just saying that we, countywide, in general, we're still about 3% below market values overall, or 97...
Or is that above?
No, we're 97% of market value.
Okay. That's just a form letter that was sent, I think, to all 40 counties that had the fact that we're out of variance, I think, is what that is.
All right. Doc?
Manager. Do you want to ask the chair if he has anything he wants to say? He's been here.
Basically.
How's it, Curtis?
All my deputies are stretched thin, so I've been your security tonight, so. But I appreciate you allowing me to speak, and I appreciate the support that I have gotten from this board over the past five years. Don't know what I would do if I didn't have the resources that I have now compared to five years ago. So thank you all for your support, and it's honored to be your chair. Thank you.
You're doing a good job, chair.
So you're packing tonight, huh?
Madam Chair, I'm always packing. And I have, I have more than one bullet. Madam Chair, I move to go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter for North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A6.
Okay. Motion has been made to go into closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The ground votes.
Okay, all right.